All right, nice Cheryl.
Hi, so I was having technical difficulties.
No worries, yeah, I saw you on earlier.
Yeah, my computer doesn't work on my computer for whatever reason, so.
Okay, I'm just gonna go through and make sure we got board members. All right, so I gotta go on live on YouTube, I'm gonna start the recording. And I'm gonna let the other people in. And then Cheryl, if you can help me, just as board members are coming in, make sure they're unmuted and other members from the public are muted. Just looking through, because they're starting to come in now. From attendance for board members right now, I've got Cheryl and Mary Lee. All right, we'll get started here in just another minute, we don't have a forum yet. So I made you co-host as well.
Okay.
All right. Just waiting on a few other board members, so we have quorum, so we can get started. Our infirm members of the public, as we're waiting, we keep the public muted until we get to the public comment sections, so just for your reference. See Juliet's joining. I'm still looking for a couple more board members, we're not quite at quorum yet. All right, let me just do a quick roll call, I see Cheryl, Juliet, Mary Lee, and Maureen. Looks like Mike's joined, so we have quorum, we just let Mike in. And all the board members, you should be unmuted. Members of the public, again, we will keep you muted until we get to the public comment sections. And we are recording to the Zoom cloud for the record, and we're also live streaming on the ER9 YouTube channel. Looks like Gwen's joining now. All right, so let me just quickly do a quick roll call one more time, I got Cheryl, Juliet, Mike, Gwen, Mary Lee, and Maureen. We're missing Karen, I didn't see Karen. Okay, well, we have quorum, so we can go ahead and get started. So I will call the meeting, the regular meeting of the Region 9 Board of Education, it's ordered at 7:33 PM. And our first item of business is approval of minutes from the Region 9 Board of Education Special Meeting on June 3, 2020, and also on June 12, 2020. So I'll look for motions for those, and we can either bring both of them at the same time, or if we want to deal with them separately, but I'll look for motions on the minutes, so we can discuss those, approve those.
So moved.
All right, that was Cheryl. The second please.
Second.
The second was from who?
Maureen.
Thank you.
I just beat Gwen.
Excellent. All right, so you got a motion on the floor then for the minutes, any discussion on either of the minutes, since we'll take both of them at the same time. Mike, I was gonna say, Mike probably has a comment, so go ahead, Mike.
No, just, just one, again Juliet, great job, but Cricklewood. I think it says Picklewood. I don't want to offend those of our closest neighbors.
Which set of meetings, minutes are you looking?
I don't know, I'm not looking at them, but I saw it on one of them, and uh.
Yeah.
Okay, would it be Cricklewood?
Cricklewood. Cricklewood. Yeah, on the June 3, page 3 on the Yeah, page 3 on the June 3, the street address, in the third paragraph.
Okay.
All right, any other comments on the minutes? All right, so all in favor of passing the minutes for the June 3 and June 12, say aye?
Aye.
Just looking around for board members, it looks like everybody, so unanimous.
Well Todd, I have to abstain, because I wasn't there on June 3.
Okay.
But I wasn't.
Wanted to stay on the June 3, okay, thank you. Got it, all right. All right, so let me just submit, there are a few more people here in the waiting room, so I'll admit them in, all right, so the next item's public comments, and as always, we'd ask you to introduce yourself, name, address, and do limit your comments to two minutes, we'll keep time on it. There are a lot of people that would like to speak today on some of the topics, so we do ask you to keep your comments to two minutes, so we can get through everything, we've got a full agenda that we need to move through as well. So we'll try to get as many people the ability to speak before we get into the main agenda items, so if you'd like to speak, please, either in the video, raise your hand so we can see you, or raise your hand with the chat symbol, and we will go and unmute you, announce you, and then you can go ahead and get started. So I see a couple, and Cheryl, if you can help me.
Yep, yep. There's three, so Heather Whaley's the first one.
Okay, so Heather, I'm gonna unmute you, and lower your hand, so Heather, go ahead.
Hi, Heather Whaley, Windy Hill Road in Reading. I want to talk about the agenda item on diversity. At a vigil on the Reading Town Green a couple of weeks ago, I heard from people of color, neighbors, adults, and students how we have failed to provide the inclusivity that so many of us have prided in our communities. The words expressed were honest, stark, and necessary. Later that week, I got a call from Chief O'Donnell of the Reading Police Department. He asked, what are we going to do about the racism in our community? He told me that in Reading, the police are regularly called because someone has seen a black person walking on the street. Last week, Chief Doyle in Easton told me the same thing happens there regularly. Police officers participate in anti-bias training, but if a person is raised and reared in a racist home, by the time they're old enough to join the police department, no program will be able to do all of that. This education needs to begin in schools. At the meeting of the Reading and Easton Boards of Education last week, I proposed the formation of a task force on diversity and inclusion to be comprised of educators, administrators, board members, and members of the community for the purpose of examining and making recommendations to curriculum, student demographics, hiring diverse staff and teachers, and funding for diversity and anti-racism initiatives. This motion was passed unanimously by both the Reading and Easton Boards. I have letters from both police departments in Reading and Easton pledging support for this task force, and they have also agreed to help fund appropriate initiatives through the police budget. Many districts have such a committee to varying degrees of success. I look to the Equity and Diversity Council of West Hartford Schools, a district-wide structure which promotes equity, advances diversity, and fosters inclusiveness, acceptance, mutual respect, and support civility and non-discrimination across all areas of their district's programs and services through developing systemic approaches to enhancing policies, practices, and programs, and participation in programs to recruit, support, and retain educators of color. We are all aware of the lack of diversity in our staff across ER9, and certainly this is not unique to our district, but how can we expect to attract, support, and sustain diversity if we have not made a commitment to diversity and inclusion as a district? As a member of the Reading Board, I know that you too, like me, have been the recipient of multiple documents suggesting changes to the existing curriculum in the ER9 schools. Much of what I have seen is well thought out and deserves consideration, but it is my firm belief that we must make improvements to increase equity and diversity as a community. We must have a united and clear vision, mission, and purpose that we can implement as a district to ensure that we are fostering a culturally competent community, so I would hope to have Region 9 also participating in such a task force, thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you Heather.
Todd, Julianne. This is the next comment.
Go ahead.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak, I'm Julianne, I live in Easton on West Hill Road. I'm a Barlow alumni, and I'd like to present to you some ideas about developing an anti-racist curriculum at Barlow, and in general, specific policies we'd like to see implemented. On Friday, we released a letter asking Barlow to incorporate culturally responsive curriculum that decolonizes the education provided to students. 437 people have signed that letter, Barlow alum, parents, and caregivers, and current students. You'll find this letter in your inboxes accompanied by a curriculum guide with specific action items. I understand last week you committed to making the task force, as Heather mentioned, and the comments on our petition, and the people who've reached out to me over the last few days have made it clear that there's more that we can do to promote racial justice at Barlow right now, besides just a task force. Our detailed plan is outlined in our curriculum guide, and we look forward to discussing it over the next few weeks, but tonight, we want to ask the board to consider the following action items. Require incoming ninth graders to read the book, So You Want to Talk About Race, by Ajema Oluwu. Commit to analyzing the current curriculum and course content to identify where our curriculum can be stronger and more culturally responsive. One tool is the culturally responsive curriculum scorecard developed by NYU. Commit to creating a mandatory ethnic studies class at Barlow, which will teach students about racism, white privilege, and countless other topics addressed in our guide. Commit to hiring at least one counselor who has experience with students of color and is qualified to be a resource for POCs who have different experiences than their white peers. Commit the task force to considering and addressing all other action items outlined in our curriculum guide. Lastly, I've been personally disturbed by the amount of people who specifically mention hearing racial slurs, including the N-word during their time at Barlow. I would like to see a zero tolerance policy on racist, xenophobic, homophobic, sexist, ableist language, and hate speech in general, with a restorative justice approach to discipline. I would also like to see an anonymous reporting system for these instances, and training for students on how to intervene when their friends use this language. In this process, it's important to recognize intersectionality and address the relatedness between identities such as race, gender, sexual orientation, ethnicity, et cetera. Thank you.
Great, thank you Julian. And we do not usually respond in public comment here, but I will acknowledge that we did receive the letter that you mentioned in our meeting. All right.
Todd, Melanie Zuckerman, thank you, sorry, Melanie Zuckerman is next.
Hi, my name is Melanie Zuckerman, and I live in Reading off of Hemlock Trail. I started as a kindergartner at RES in 2004, and I graduated from Barlow in 2018. In my 13 years of education in Reading, 13 years that by all accounts were fully rich learning in math, science, English, history, and foreign languages, I cannot recall a single impactful moment where I learned the hard truths about race in this country. Of course, I remember the talking points that our history teachers would nail in our heads. I remember debating whether Martin Luther King Jr. or Malcolm X was a more effective protester. I remember learning the stories of Rosa Parks, Rosalynn Franklin, and George Washington Carver. I remember learning about the triangular sugar trade. These are black people and black stories that we are comfortable telling. Stories that have been ingrained in our parents' generation and allow us to feel a sense of relief. We can sit back and relax with the knowledge that race once was a problem in this country, but was fully absolved in the 60s. In fact, we don't address racial inequities in the classroom after the Civil Rights Movement. We don't learn about Trayvon Martin, Michael Brown, George Floyd, and the countless other victims of police brutality. We promise to say their names, but we don't repeat them to our children. This should not be a partisan or controversial issue. As a majority-white town in a New York suburb, we are privileged precisely because of the policies that we refuse to teach in our schools. Redlining, the 13th Amendment, and the structural inequities that we are all aware still exist in Connecticut schools need to be addressed in the education of our children. If education truly is the lighting of the fire, then Barlow is equipping its students with wet leaves that will never spark. I implore you to reconsider the privileges that we all possess, and to seriously look at the guidance that this generation has provided you to educate the next. Thank you.
Thank you Melanie.
Okay, Todd, Leila Orici was next. Can I let her in? I think I can.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Elizabeth Heeman, okay, great, thank you.
My name is Leila Orisi, I'm from Easton and live on North Park Avenue. When I spoke at the last meeting, I spoke with emotion and hurt because of a community that has wronged me and many others, and in an administration that has actively opened a blind eye to racism. While I know some might take that as a generalization and being accusatory, I have listened to the attempts made to add diversity into our faculty, and listened to what is being done right now, such as the social justice program at John Lee, and I've listened to what books are currently being taught by diverse authors in our high school. I have listened, and it hasn't been enough, it isn't enough, and I wasn't and it, and I want the board to recognize that and accept it, because that is the only way we can move forward. We must accept there is a problem before we can solve it. After the meeting last Tuesday, I watched the TED Talk, The Danger of a Single Story by Amanda Adici, which was mentioned by one of the board members. It was a powerful video, and I recommend that everyone watches it after this as well. It's important to see both sides of a story before you make assumptions, so I hope you listen to the stories you hear today. They are a part of Easton and Reading's story. I'd also like to thank Heather Whaley for making the task, the Task Force for Diversity and Inclusion a priority and point of conversation at the last meeting. A task force could greatly help our community gain new perspective and be a long-term goal for our community to make decisions through the lens of diversity and inclusion. It is also important to note that the task force shouldn't be the only thing we are working towards. There are so many changes that can be made to the curriculum and considered right now, right here. Julianne and other alumni have outlined those changes in a detailed curriculum guide attached to a petition that has been circulating this week, and I hope you read through it thoroughly. In addition, the importance of inclusion was brought up by some parents at the last meeting. Our schools must have the supportive structures of inclusion, even before hiring staff of color. It can often feel isolating, tiring, and frustrating being one of the only teachers of color. With supports in place beforehand, there will be a lower teacher turnover rate from teachers of color, the same goes for students. Without the tools to critically and thoughtfully discuss race, it is impossible to engage with new texts by people of color authors in the curriculum. So I propose that the board address and vote on requiring ninth graders to read Iggy Omah Olio's book, So You Want to Talk About Race, as Barlow's first step in creating a more inclusive and anti-racist curriculum, thank you.
Thank you Leila.
Thank you. Todd, Blythe Graziano next.
Yep. All right, go ahead.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Blythe Graziano, I'm a resident of Reading from Deacon Abbott Road, and a Barlow alumni. I'm also mixed, mixed race, being half-white, half-Asian, and I was one of the few non-white students who attended Barlow. I've been attending Reading schools since I was in fifth grade, and I can count on one hand the times I've learned about history through a non-white lens. Even when we did learn about slavery or colonization, it was almost always from the perspective of the colonizer. The way our schools taught about racism led me and others to believe that once slavery and segregation ended, so did institutional racism. But this is far from the case. I don't ever remember learning about gentrification, redlining, voter suppression, mass incarceration, police brutality, inequitable healthcare, or anything else that would shed a light on how the government and the United States have been constantly consciously oppressing communities of color, specifically black and brown communities. Most of what I've learned about these things came from my own independent research or from my first year of college. The only times I remember being truly taught about inequality was from specific teachers like Miss Staley and Mrs. Pollak, who chose to incorporate that into their curriculum. They made efforts to talk about the present-day injustices people face. In cultural anthropology, we were given a lot of resources that challenged us to think outside of our own bias, and look at other cultures without judgment. This was a great class, and it taught me a lot, but it was also an elective I took in my second semester of senior year. This is far too late for students to have their internal biases challenged. And for the kids who didn't take this elective, they might never get that experience at all. Why is a class about Western civilizations from thousands of years ago our graduation requirement, but there is no requirement for any class discussing modern-day racial inequality? Why, out of the dozens of books I had to read in school, can I only remember three being written by black authors, and none being written by Asian authors? The only time I learned about the Philippines in class was when I found out it was annexed by the United States. Barlow provides students with a good education, yes, but not one that will prepare anybody for the realities of how this country operates. It's time to analyze our current education system and teach students the truth about the world. I think the proposal that Julianne, like Melanie, suggested would be a great start to creating an anti-racist community at Barlow. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Elizabeth Heeman, Todd.
All right, go ahead Elizabeth.
My name is Elizabeth Heeman, I live in Reading on Firehill Road, and I'm here to speak on race in our public schools. I've spent my entire life in this town and received all of my education from our public schools. I'm grateful for the education I received here, and I want to emphasize the immense amount of privilege that we have as students in this town to receive adequate funding and support for our public education. However, just because their education has been good does not mean that it cannot improve. During my time at Barlow, racism was not rare. I heard white students yelling the N-word in the halls, listened to students uphold racist stereotypes in class, and saw students and entire sports teams dress as Mexicans and Hawaiians. Even worse, I saw administrators brush off complaints about how offensive it was to dress up as a caricature of another race. Barlow has a culture problem when it comes to race, and the faculty training and curriculum do not do enough to address this. It should not be the responsibility of students of color to teach their peers not to be racist. It should be our teachers and our administrators who teach students about the harsh realities of racial injustice, and how to identify implicit biases. Just adding a few more lessons about Martin Luther King isn't enough. Learning about black history and systemic racism needs to be accompanied by concrete lessons about how racism thrives inside of each and every one of us. Students need to learn about microaggressions, about cultural appropriation, about white privilege, and about implicit biases. When students learn how to address conflict and wellness 10, they also need to learn how to address racist behavior they might encounter. When students learn healthy decision-making and wellness 11, they need to also learn about how their decisions can be impacted by racial biases, and learn strategies to be explicitly anti-racist in their decisions. These lessons need to be present across all disciplines at Barlow. These lessons may be unpopular, because they force students, teachers, and parents to reflect on their own biases and actions. That isn't easy, but it needs to be done. We owe it to the students of Reading and Easton to equip them with the tools they need to be better friends, better people, and better citizens, thank you.
Thank you.
Caitlin Colangelo.
All right Caitlin.
Can you hear me now, sorry?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
My name is Caitlin Colangelo, I live in Easton on Wildwood Road, I'm going to use this time to read some of the personal experiences that were shared with us. Fifty-eight people independently mentioned hearing racial slurs during their time at GBHS, these are from the document, and other experiences included, quote, "As a multiracial individual, I have had a teacher ask me, what are you? They were honestly curious, and I was fine with telling them, however, the phrasing of the question was disrespectful and insensitive. Some other teachers have also asked me the same question in different variations, which I felt were unnecessary." "I have also refrained from telling myself from telling people, most of students my race, because I didn't want to be bullied." End quote. Someone sibling who was in middle school says, quote, "That there are a group of boys that call her the N-word, a monkey, a terrorist, a slave, and say that she's Indian just because she has darker skin," end quote. Quote, "Some people talk about someone's sister blowing up the school, and many people think she's Mexican just from their own assumptions," end quote. Quote, "I'm multiracial and not black, but I've been called a monkey and black before. Somehow I've been categorized as a black person by some peers due to the lack of diversity in our school and a lack of exposure for some students to other races." Also, when teachers teach about slavery, a lot of the white students look to anyone in the classroom that has a tan or is black, end quote. Quote, "I found many white students were very comfortable shouting racial slurs and calling people the Mexican or the Asian, and referring to fellow classmates who didn't look like them," end quote. Quote, "It makes me really mad when people say, are you Mexican? It also makes me mad that we rarely talked about this in school," end quote. In the words of another respondent, quote, "Racism occurs throughout the student body and is not addressed," end quote. In the words of another respondent, quote, "It's critical that we not only teach our kids the importance of speaking up to friends who speak in an ignorant way, but also how to do it and what to say," end quote.
All right, thank you.
Heather Satin, I think it might be a screen name.
Hello?
Yeah, Heather, go ahead, we can hear you.
That is my name.
Okay. Sorry.
So I just wanted to bring up, well, two quick things, one was, I was on last week's Zoom, and it was discussed that there was a 60 to 70% approval rating on the survey of the way that school was taught in these last few months, and to me, that was shocking, and it's obvious that the people responded were definitely not school educators. And I'm not sure the percentage of parents, you know, what the percentage of the whole system of parents who responded, but there's no way that that is an overall approval rating, and my question on that is that I'm curious if you did a survey to teachers who are the school educators, and what their rating of the way of the asynchronous learning, how they felt about it, because I know my friends and myself, it was atrocious. And the other thing I wanted to say is that, because this is another that this will be the fifth year that I've approached the school system, I'm happy to fund a Holocaust survivor program. It basically falls upon deaf ears, I've emailed, I've gone into school, I'm happy to do it, while I live in New Canaan for however many more years that will be. It's an easy thing to do, the kids just have to learn about it once, and meet these survivors once, and it will stick with them. It will probably take 45 minutes out of their entire high school life, and I just don't understand how you cannot find 45 minutes out of four years to make this happen, when someone's willing to do all the work and fund it all for you. And this year, we did have it for 40 kids in Ms. Kennedy's class, but those are 40 kids who wanted to be there. And those aren't the kids who really have to hear what's going on. And we also know that the survivors aren't going to be living for many more years, and this is the time that you have to do it, and I'm happy to fund and help, and et cetera.
Great, thank you, thank you for that offer.
Your address.
Oh, um, Farview Farm, Reading.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, anyone else?
One more, Mia. The CPO.
Hi, can I? Um, hi, my name is Mia DiCipio, I live on Soundview Drive in Easton, Connecticut. And I wanted to talk a little bit about a conversation that I was having with one of my friends the other day, she asked me the question, when was the first time that you ever thought about your race? Um, and the first, I'd never been asked that question before, and when I sat and really thought about it, I realized that the first time I really had to I really thought about my race and how it impacts my life, and how I'm privileged by being white, I realized that that was junior year of college, and my friend proceeded to tell me that the first time that she ever had to think about her race was early elementary school. And she told me about the the difference in age between what part of life the difference in age between what part of life white people start thinking about their race versus at what point in life people of color begin thinking about race. And people of color tend to start thinking about their race in very early childhood, whereas white people do not typically begin considering their race and how it impacts their life until adulthood. And so I think that we, I just wish that the education I had been provided in the Easton-Reading School District had given me the tools to consider my race much earlier in life and how I've benefited from white privilege from the day I was born. Because I think part of the reason why racism is still so prevalent today is because white people don't recognize the many ways in which race privileges them. And because you don't have to think about it, you're, as a white person, your race does not directly impact the type of healthcare you're going to receive, the education you're going to receive. Whereas race impacts every facet of life for people of color. And so I would encourage our school system moving forward to take a very good look at the curriculum that we've outlined and the steps that we've provided and hopefully incorporate some ways that we can encourage our student body, which is predominantly made up of white people, of white students, to consider how their privilege
Great, thank you.
serves them.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Jenna, Jenna Thoritz.
All right, go ahead, Jenna.
Hi, my name is Jenna. I live in Easton on Esmeral Way. I graduated from Joel Barlow High School in 2017. And I just want to, first of all, echo all of the words and thoughts that my peers have shared. I think they've all done an incredible job. So there's just one other thing that I would like to add about sort of the impact that this absence of education has had on me. In the past few weeks, I was, I've been reflecting on my experience in the ER9 educational system. And hearing a lot of my peers talk about different racial slurs and things that they experienced at Barlow made me realize that I wasn't even well-educated enough to understand the racism that was around me at high school. It was only upon further reflection and going back through the curriculum materials and really interrogating the things that I was taught that I was able to realize just how racially insensitive my education was. And while I do appreciate the education I received at Joel Barlow, and it prepared me very well for a lot of different things in my college experience, I do think it, excuse me, I do think it did set me up for failure in my interactions with students of color at college. Just because I'm coming from a predominantly white town, I had limited interactions with students of color. And I felt that I could have been much better prepared to have those conversations and to have those interactions. So I think by examining this curriculum and taking the time and investing the resources in it, we will be preparing our students for a much better experience in college and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Scanning through here. Cheryl, let me know if you see any other.
No, I don't see anybody else.
Okay. All right, well, we do have another section of public comment near the end of the meeting. If we make it through, we typically have pretty long meetings, so hopefully people will stick around through the whole thing. And we'd love to hear more comments at the end. So thank you, everyone, for your comments, both students, former students, community. We appreciate it and appreciate everybody, you know, staying brief and giving everyone a chance to speak. So thank you. With that, we're going to move on to our next item in the agenda, which is board member comment. And I'll just go down through the role because the board members are all kind of in different windows right at the moment. So Cheryl, any comment?
Yes, I do have a comment. So I have prepared comments. I'll just read them. "I am a proud parent of a 2019 Barlow grad and two students currently attending Barlow. When my oldest was a junior, she shared an article from her AP Psychology class titled, 'Why Your Brain Hates Other People.' It addressed people's tendencies to categorize themselves and each other as us versus them based on race, ethnicity, gender, language, group, religion, age, socioeconomic status, and so forth. I read the article with interest and was glad there was curriculum that challenged our students to think beyond their own individual stories. Fast forward a year later, I was also glad to see the article resurface in my younger daughter's English class. Over the past five years, I've heard from many students and know our Barlow curriculum takes similar approaches in cultural anthro, US histories, you know, et cetera, different types of history classes, a push. However, I've also heard instances of Black, Latinx, and Asian students feeling unwelcome as if they under a spotlight are being categorized or being bullied because of their race. And one of my own kids has shared that she, that sometimes she didn't, she feel, she didn't feel as if she belonged because she is part Asian. From white Barlow students and alumni who have not experienced racism but have heard more about history in college, I've heard how in hindsight, they wish they had learned more about history at Barlow from a non-white perspective. I've also heard from the Reading white community members who have not had children at Barlow for years that there should be more anti-racist education. This feedback across different demographics indicates that our community believes there is more that we can and should do to enhance the diversity and inclusion in our curriculum at Barlow. I agree with that view and add that it is our responsibility to see what we can to do more. Diversity can come in the form of telling the same history from different perspectives using a variety of sources so that all students in every grade can learn about things from a different viewpoint. Meanwhile, the inclusion can come in every class, every day, by citing more examples of people of color who have contributed to a particular field. These and other initiatives will provide a richer experience for our students to learn about others and themselves and counteract the us versus them mentality. I hope the Region 9 Board, Communities of Reading Easton, support this initiative of diversity and inclusion by joining the task force and including perhaps its own initiatives and then establish metrics to measure progress. Thanks."
Thank you. Julia?
Yes?
Any comment?
No.
Mike?
Yeah, I have a comment. So I'd like to applaud the Barlow alumni's support of the Black Lives Matter movement. And I appreciate their willingness to provide feedback on their educational experience at Barlow in order to help us improve our curriculum moving forward. Curriculum revisions are an essential element as we work towards ending systemic racism in this country. As an individual board member, I am committed to creating a learning environment free of biases and discrimination where students can become better informed of the hardship Black Americans have endured for generations. There is a lack of diversity within the student and faculty population, and we must strive to create a better balance. And I believe a quick but thorough plan for improvement is certainly warranted to better reflect the expectations of our Barlow community and the towns of Reading and Easton.
Great, thank you, Mike. Gwen? Sorry, hold on, you're muted. Just a minute, Gwen. There we go. We can hear you.
I just want to say I'm so impressed with the Barlow alums and the work that they're doing. And, you know, we all need to do a better job moving forward, clearly. This is obviously not just a discussion in Reading and Easton, but I am just very impressed with these kids, young adults, adults, who are committed enough to their school that they're taking the time to share these reflections with us and really be a part of the conversation as we move forward.
Great, thank you, Gwen. Karen?
The same. I was really impressed. I read through all the letters. I read through all the materials that were sent from the alumni. And honestly, there was a lot of effort that was put into that, a lot of thoughtfulness. And I think as a school, as a community, I think we have to rise to the occasion to try to include more diversity and inclusiveness in our curriculum as well as in all aspects of our community.
Thank you. Mary Lee?
I'd also like to, you know, repeat all the words of my board members. I was so impressed with, with the words of everybody, all the information the students put together. And I have to admit, in all honesty, I learned a lot from reading what you wrote. There are terms that I didn't know that I needed to look up, and I am the better for it. And I pledge to you to do whatever I can to help us work toward having more diversity in, in our educational system. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I too am the parent of three Barlow grads, all of whom have remarked to me, particularly in the past couple of weeks, about how their education at Barlow prepared them for many things, but it did not prepare them appropriately for the wider world that they would encounter and the diversity of perspectives and views that they'd encounter in the wider world and the challenges that other people face that they unquestionably do not. So I do think we can do a better job of teaching people to not otherize and to consider perspectives that they might, that might not be a part of their direct experience.
Thank you, Mark. And then I'll just add on, again, I appreciate all the former and current students, all the information that you've shared with the board and parents. Again, it was very helpful, very informative, and started a lot of conversations around the dinner table at my house. I have one of four kids now graduating from Barlow and the other in the Easton system. And it was, it was good to be able to start some dialogue and talk about some of the topics that were shared. And we look forward to having some more of those conversations as a board going forward. And also would like to also say congratulations again to the class of 2020 and their recent graduation and everyone that participated in that, faculty, board members, members of the community, Reading Police Department, and everyone else, all the photographers. It was a very, it's a fantastic ceremony and a great way to do something nice for the class that's had a lot of challenges here in the last part of the year. So thank you for that. I think that's all the board member comments, so we will move on to administrative reports. And we've got a few in here. So Gina Rataum, I'm not sure how you would like to go through those in particular order. I'll start calling those out. Dr. Penn?
Okay, thank you. We did not have our student comment. Max is off for the summer. And so I did want to draw attention, though, to the board members and also to our many community members who are here to take a look at the noteworthy news. In particular, we had a little milestone with Abby Oda. She was only the second student in Barlow history to earn the top honor of Gatorade Player of the Year for her performance in softball. And I also wanted to, it was, it was so wonderful. I know they've now muted their cameras, but it was so wonderful to see so many of our graduates here and speaking so clearly and so eloquently. We had an experience similar to this where we had members of our graduate class joined Kathryn Nuzzo at a science symposium. And we brought current students and our scholars who have graduated in the field of STEM or currently enrolled in engineering and STEM-related fields, talk and share. And it was a wonderful experience. So I wanted to bring your attention there. And also in that report, you will see that we have named our 2020-2021 Teacher of the Year. That's a teacher voted on by the Barlow faculty. And this year, that honor goes to Ryan Swift. And when you want a feel-good moment, read that noteworthy news and read what people are writing about him. Kim Pack also, I'd like to highlight her achievements. She is a parent educator, and she was named our Parent Educator of the Year for 2020. And she's been with us since 2003, so that was a great honor, well-deserved. And then there were two links in noteworthy news that I'd encourage you to click on. One is a link to our digital art show. If you recall, we would have had our Barlow Palooza event and all of that student artwork that floods our hallways. Our art teachers and students got together and put together a digital art show, well worth the click. And then our 2020 virtual graduation ceremony, our student-produced senior farewell, and our car procession graduation ceremony are all linked to that agenda. And you'll also find that on our Joel Barlow website. Just wonderful, collaborative, great memories, you know, not the way we wanted our school year to end, but our students came through for us like they do so, so many other times. And so if I switch to the administrative report to just speak specifically about graduation, the student that was behind that student-produced video is Annie Gregory. And there are so many people on right now. I don't know if Annie is one of them, but she really deserves our thanks. She collected video clips from her peers and set it to music and included faculty clips and did a wonderful job in kind of an informal student-produced senior farewell. And you can find that on the website. Probably the best comment of our graduation ceremony, and I know that Jennifer Damaris is on here, who deserves just such a shout-out for coordinating our incredible panel of volunteers, what a committee that was. And, you know, Jen said many times to me that we wouldn't have been able to do this without our community. So as I listen to our graduates speak and I listen to the board members, I'm so thankful to be entering this time with the community and knowing that there's so much more that we can accomplish together and knowing, seeing how we pulled off this, this graduation ceremony with community support. One of the comments that someone made to me was that the ceremony was so Barlow, in quotes, and we often use Barlow as a verb. And it really was. The faculty members that lined Barlow Drive, the fire departments that strung the American flag between fire trucks, it was, it was really, really lovely. So please take a moment, find that link on our website, and take a look at the pictures. Our volunteer photographers captured the event so beautifully. It was the pictures, we wouldn't have been able to get those pictures if we would have been at the O'Neill Center. So it really was a lovely event. I also included in the administrative report some post-graduation plans. And Paula Panos, our Director of School Counseling, is on this call if you have specific questions about that. But as Paula shared with me, a lot of our data is incomplete because we didn't have the students in front of us. We did our best to capture the plans of our 215 seniors. We know that all but three of our students have graduated, and the three that have not yet completed their requirements, all have been contacted and all have a plan. Forty-three students haven't updated their college information on Naviance yet. And so the counselors are trying to get hold of those families and those students so that we know where they are attending. We normally do that detailed report in October to the board. We know seventeen students are not attending college at this time. They're going to work or community college or part-time or full-time. And we'll update that information as we have it. Five students are attending Ivy League schools. Forty-two students are attending the most competitive colleges. Thirty-four highly competitive, and thirty-six very competitive. It doesn't mean they didn't get into other schools, and that will, will present in our full report when we are together in October, hopefully in person. The end-of-year grade reporting, we gave you a couple of tables in the admin report just so that you had a handle on how many students selected the grade of pass. As you recall, we had that as an option for students for quarter four in our distance learning grading protocol. And it was a family decision to either keep the grade that was earned for quarter four or select a pass grade. And there would be many reasons And there would be many reasons why students might accept a pass instead. You can see from these statistics here that 14.5% 14.5% or 603 grades were a pass for semester two, quarter four. And then for those year long courses, it was 11%, 11.4% of the grades were a pass. And then just for your information, we gave you the breakdown of grades. And then the final piece of this, unless you have questions, is the athletics update. And Mike has been leading actually on CAS, the Connecticut Association of Schools in and CIAC in setting out parameters of what do we need to do to get students back safely? To get them back into training routines. And so some of our fall teams will be able to start training outside. They still can't come into the building. But there's parameters that are set forth and they'll be hopefully coming back July 6th or somewhere around there. And they'll follow return to play guidelines that the CIAC has had set forward. And then we've already had over 200 athletes participate in our virtual fall sports night to get them ready for whatever the fall will bring for athletics. So with those three reports, if you have questions, I see Jen and Mike Santangeli and Paula Panos are all on and can give you any details that you'd like.
Jane, I actually have a question. By the way, the art show was great. Graduation pictures were awesome, even though I couldn't come. So so nice job, everybody closing out the year just all across the board. So my question is with regard to the CIAC. So it's, I mean, certainly it's still in limbo because we don't know what form the athletics will take. But to the extent that we're also looking at an MOU with the JBEA. And I just want to make sure that we have a Plan A, Plan B with respect to the assistant coaches, the union versus non-union. So I just wanted to make sure that that kind of is in mind as opposed to, you know, so that we don't repeat the same issue that we had from the spring sports. I don't know if we've thought that through and perhaps we can't because we don't know what form sports are going to take in the fall.
Right. So right now we know for the 2019 2020 school year, all of our coaches were paid and assistant coaches were paid their full salary. And it didn't matter if they were in a bargaining unit or not in a bargaining unit. And that was a decision that the board made, I think in May. We are entering the fall thinking that all of our teams are back and all of our and and that's where we are. If any of that changes, we would come back to the board and and that would be something that we would have to talk about with MOUs and but it's not my understanding, probably a better question for Tom, right? It's not my understanding that we're entering the school year with an MOU where we're planning a fall with contractual obligations all around. Is that accurate, Tom?
Well, at the moment, it may be that some bargaining units seek to engage in an MOU. But at the moment, that has not been sufficiently clarified.
Other questions from board members or comments around that? Mike, for the sports for the summer, saying a July 6th start. I know they have the fall meeting. How is there a plan in place to continue to communicate over the summer on any decisions that are handed down? You know, from the state or particular coaches on practices and so forth. So people, you know, knowing that July 6th is a couple of weeks away, but making sure that we are getting communications out to the parents and the athletes here over the summer.
Yeah, that's that's exactly why we had the fall sports night, you know, early and started in June so that we could get everybody's information, have the coaches have some type of way of, you know, contacting families and athletes so that as changes come along, we can get it out to people so they know and obviously use this service we need to as well. Just so you know, at this point, what they're what they're allowing the CIA, it works in two different ways. The CIAC is allowing all sports to start having conditioning with a ball, which is very different than how it used to be, just would just be conditioning over the summer, starting July 6th, but with specific adjustments to that. So you can't, you have have cohorts of 10 athletes together. If they're active, they do not have to wear masks, but coaches have to wear a mask or anybody who's standing has to have to wear a mask. So there's a whole set of protocols for that. As changes come along, we will adjust. So the, well, our philosophy is right now is control what we can control. So get information out, make sure people understand the information, get started and then, you know, adjust accordingly to whatever comes out next. The CIAC keeps on sending things, we have meetings weekly with them. So at this point, they stayed the same over the last couple of weeks, but we, you know, everybody can see as, you know, Governor Lamont sends out different, different changes, we will adjust as well. So to answer your question, we're going to try to get the information out. We're trying to keep it slow. We've sent out what we were supposed to send out to our coaches to get out to our athletes. And outside of spring sports, and I'll explain that in a second, everything's going to start on July 6th in this format. So as far as spring sports, they are actually allowed to go through rec departments to actually have games if they wanted to. Most of our teams are not going to do that. They cannot use the school insurance. They have to go outside, use outside insurance, cannot use any of the high school equipment, but that's the CIAC's way of trying to give them, I guess, somewhat of a spring season. But officials have to wear face masks and sort of coaches or anybody on a bench. But at this point, none of our teams have chosen to go that route. They're getting together in the rec programs to run baseball and whatnot like they always do. But outside of that, we haven't seen any type of game schedule, any game scheduled at this point.
Hear you, Tom.
Sorry, the fields are all, sorry, who's muting with background noise here. So the the fields are all open, right? But the building is not.
Correct. No, no one can be in the building. There's there's saying, say, AC wise until August 3rd, but that could change. But at this point, there will be no activities in the building at all, at least until August 3rd.
Okay, great. Mike, I think I saw your hand up. Did you have a question?
Yeah. So, Mike, I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things. You said cohorts of 10. Does that mean if your sports team has 20 players, they're in groups of 10? And how does that work? As far as the 10 that are in one group and 10 are in the other group, but then they switch and they intermingle again? Or do they stay separate? And how do they? Are they staying distances apart if they're not wearing masks? And I guess what I'm concerned about is, obviously, I'm a big supporter of the athletic community, but I see these tennis tournaments and all of a sudden they all have COVID and and the Dallas Cowboys start practicing and then people have like, so I'm I'm fearful that that we're being cautious and I know you are. So I just wanted to give you the opportunity to kind of explain how we're doing that so that we are being cautious. And then as a follow up to that, I just wanted to make sure that you have the tools you need to be able to be cautious. In other words, do you have the thermometers? Do you have the masks? Do you have the gloves? Do you have all the PPEs and stuff that you need so that we are prepared?
Good question. So the first part of your question, you have to keep the cohort together. It's not just for one practice. It's throughout that timeline from at this point. Certain, you know, July 6th until they make changes. So that change comes, say, July 20th, then you can adjust. But at this point, that core has to stay together for contact tracing purposes, even with the coach. So if you separated, you could separate them from one, like one end of the field to the other's end of the field and they have two different cohorts or two different sets of coaches. You could do that. Or your other option is you have to have at least 15 to 30 minutes in between sessions to wipe down, disinfect the equipment to get the next cohort in. So that's, that's what we wrote up. That's the protocol that we wrote up. And we, you know, sent out actually to the entire league, but also to all our coaches so they understand specifically what they have to do. As far as, I know Walter put an order in for, you know, what we're going to need starting July 6th. But he would be the person or Gina or whoever to answer that question. But I know, I know an order went out.
And we do have all of the PPEs are on campus now. We have thermometers that are on campus now. And we are awaiting our protocol for July 6th. That that will complement what Mike is putting out for his topics.
And and just can I follow on to Mike DeGusino's question? So if are we doing any thermometer testing or if somebody does test positive, what are we doing with the cohort that they were in?
So so the state did a couple of things. CIAC sent a couple of things out. The thermometers, the coaches are not mandated to take temperatures. But what they are mandated to do is send out a checklist as far as symptoms. So they send it out to their athletes. If they have anything or they're not supposed to come at all. If they come again, the coach has to check each athlete through this, the series of, you know, questions pertaining to symptoms. If at the end of that, that's where the, you know, you know, so at the end of a practice or, you know, a week or whatever, and someone tests positive for COVID-19, then that whole group is removed from any activities going on and they have to, you know, obviously quarantine for the for two weeks. So that is the specific protocol. Anybody tests positive within that cohort, that entire cohort has to be removed for at least two weeks from any type of activity.
Any other board members? I know we can probably go on and on here around the sports and what's going on with it, but any other questions? If you want to move on to others. Okay, great. Thank you, Mike, for that. And Gina, I did have one other question on the end of your grading. Do we have any comparison or has anybody had a chance to look at semester two and final grades compared to the previous year? I was just curious, like with the distance learning, besides having the passes in here, which were, you know, 14 or 12, 15, 12% people taking passes, but outside of that, you know, were there any shifts in in grades per normal? I know, you know, every class is different, but it it seems like, you know, the the letter grades were still primarily positive. But I was just curious if there's been any comparison done. I may not have had time yet to do that.
Prelimarily. So what you see is in in the C range, you could see in that semester two chart, there was a 5% of students earning a C. It was 11% in semester one. So that would, I haven't done the breakdown to say, well, did students take a pass if they earned a C or did they take a pass if they earned a D? But that's where I see them coming from. In a D range, we had about 3.5% in semester one earned a D and there's a 1.3% of Ds. So in speaking with Paula, I think most of the students who were earning a D, in other words, they were doing enough to pass, but just barely opted for the P. Would that be a fair statement, Paula? Oh, she's muted. I'm sorry. Yeah, there you go.
I would agree with you. Think that's what we saw. I just started doing the analysis, trying to really look at where the the grade breakdown differential came between first semester and second.
Okay, great. That's helpful. And yeah, we would appreciate, you know, a follow up with you just to hear another board members, I'm sure, like to hear as well.
Are we going to get like a presentation maybe next month? Like we normally do, you know, as far as, I know that the end of the school year occurred and hopefully we got all of our students through. And we had a plan for those who didn't, you know, finish on time. But it's always nice to see that and to see, you know, some of the colleges they they were accepted into. And again, I am slightly concerned as to how the students who would have received Ds that now have Ps, how does that affect their GPA? Moving forward and does that disproportionately elevate our GPA? And how does that affect other students and college admit tences and stuff? So, but not for tonight. Just I think it would be helpful to to hear that at some point, to have that discussion when we have a meeting where we can have some time.
Sure, we could prepare that for you, definitely.
Yeah, Megan, yeah, I agree. I think that would be helpful, especially knowing if we're going back into some form of distance learning again next year, I'd be good to learn, you know, what what the impacts and were this year from a grades perspective and universities and so forth. So that'd be great. We can add that in July or August topic. Okay, any other comments on that administrative report? Anything else on?
Thank you.
Okay, Scott, anything to highlight in the object summary or transfers?
Yeah, I can run through those quickly. The budget object summary that you have in front of you reflects the last payrolls of the year for the teachers and a month on since our last review. When we did this deeper dive in the last board meeting in May, I was out looking at that time. After the board had made some decisions in regards to contributions to the pension plan and the capital reserve. At that time, I was out looking about 1.5 million unspent that would be proportionally sent to the towns as unexpended funds at the year. I'd increase that now by about 200K. I would bring that up to about 1.7. So that would raise the proportional amounts to the towns reading from about 880 up to 980. And Eastern up from about 650 to 720. Major drivers for that really reflect.
Can you repeat the the last number for?
They split the portion.
Yeah, this way one more time. Yeah.
Yeah, the original outlook for reading was 880 and that increases to 980. And the Eastern was originally, or I should say, a month ago at 650. And now it's 720.
Okay, and that's primarily attributable to just we were forecasting bills and things like that that have come through.
Yeah, exactly. It's refinement of things. I would say the biggest move area really was aligning, catching up in regards to the status of out placements and reflecting those in the financial system. And secondly, multiple, multiple smaller areas, but places like transportation, for example, which had been under some level of flux and I was doing some estimates on are now completely locked and they know exactly what those are. And the same thing happened in other areas where I was out looking, things like what the May and June bill was going to be for electricity. And, you know, now I know what May is and that kind of thing. So it's just solidifying of things coming in a little better than originally outlooked. So that's, that's the budget object summary. If there are any other particular questions on that, otherwise I'd move on.
Mike?
Yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions. So number one, at the Board of Finance meeting in Reading, they talked about some of the grant money or reimbursement money, care money, whichever, however we want to phrase it, that Connecticut received that they gave to towns for reimbursement for COVID-19 related expenses. At that time, he also acknowledged that Region Nine is actually its own separate entity. And whether or not we have to go through the towns or not, we can certainly put in claims for COVID-19 related expenses to see whether or not we would qualify for any of those reimbursement fundings. And just as an example, he said in the town of Reading, they received $4,300 for face shields and laptops to connect to work at home. So it seems like it's kind of broad what the you know, requirements are, what what the, you know, qualifiers are for that program. And so my question would be, A, did did we take advantage of that? And if not, do we plan to try and get in on that and see whether or not we can receive some reimbursement in from from the COVID-19 costs?
So the educational part of that from the CARES Act comes directly to districts. So each of our three districts, each of my three districts have received an allotment of the federal CARES grant, the state of Connecticut receives something like $111 million and that's been proportionally distributed back down to the districts. The process to access that is such that that is our first place that we need to go and we need to exhaust those funds before we can proceed to any other funding source. I've just gotten access to the system to do that in the last day or two. So I will proceed to do that, although there is a technical issue at the moment in that there is So I will proceed to do that, although there is a a technical issue at the moment in that there is some dispute over the latitude to which public school districts have the ability to distribute or sorry, to access those funds. You know, laterally, or whether it needs to also be shared with private schools. As a result, there's some question as to the amount of money that we actually do have available to us. So that's, that's sort of the first tranche and first wave of approach to this. I think that a key part of it is, as you described, what the eligibility is for the specific reimbursement areas. And I need to review that very carefully. But yes, the second wave or the second piece would be after that is exhausted for the municipality-based school districts, they can apply for FEMA funds through the town, or in other words, as a component or subcomponent of the town's overall submission. And for Region Nine, we can do that independently as our own separate body. I've not initiated that work yet to do that.
Thank you, because I I figured you were on it. I just, the way they were talking about it at the town was like, well, maybe Region Nine could get, so I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything. The second question is I'm more uncertain of, but it's something that I read and so I I wanted to follow up and I know that that Patty Roscoe is also on the call, so maybe she can lend some expertise to us as well, but I'm pretty sure I read somewhere that a federal judge expanded the or increased the age at which we are responsible to provide for special education costs. And so when I read that, the first concern I had or the first red flag that went up is does that affect us going into next year? Do we have students that might have aged out that are no longer going to age out, that we are going to be financially responsible for? Or am I understanding it incorrectly? Is it something that's happening in a in the following year or or what? But I would like to better understand that to make sure that we don't have greater exposure than we were prepared for.
Patty and I have been in discussion about that and it is a bit of a moving target. But I'll defer to Patty to speak to the details, but she can't, she needs to be unmuted.
She's down in the corner. You're you're unmuted, Patty.
Unfortunately, she's not coming through. Perhaps I could paraphrase.
That would be fine. I I, you know, I put her on the hot seat for so many meetings. I don't need to do it in her last meeting. I just thought maybe I would throw her a bone, but.
Yeah, she should be unmuted, but yeah, go ahead.
But perhaps Patty will be. Keep talking, Patty, if you come through. We can see you gesturing.
She's actually on vacation, so I don't think she's in Reading or Eastern.
I can give you an update on that. There was a judge's ruling that extended the duty of schools to 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 provide transition services for students that has traditionally, that student has aged out when the student turns twenty one. The judge, the judge's ruling extended that by one year to to twenty two years old. The state and several other organizations are contesting that. But there could be a significant financial exposure if in the coming year, for which we had not planned, if that is upheld. But caps and 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 several organizations are are seeking clarity on that, so.
And what I could, what I could further contribute to that is is that Patty and I, Patty brought this to my attention when this arose. We discussed the necessary financial considerations for it and with advice of counsel determined an approach to take. I've included that in my financial calculations and outlooks for this. So based on what we know now, we've addressed it. Could it change in the future? Yes, it could. But based on what, but based on what we know now and based on Patty's guidance and with with her consultation with legal counsel, we've chosen the course given that.
Right, but just to to better clarify, without, you know, with without stating how many students or whatever, I don't know if there's a way that you can give the potential exposure, you know, in an aggregate or or whether you can also articulate whether or not that would be next year's expense. And that number, I would assume, was not in the calculations when we formulated the budget based upon the timing of the ruling and the budget. So I just want to make sure that I I understand it completely.
Yeah, I I think, as I say, we've taken a provision for some things that we know of now that we would expect to be able to cover from this year's budget, given the timing as we understand it now. If those things were to change, it certainly would affect next year's budget. The amount to which I guess I would put anywhere in round numbers from fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand, just as an approximate range. But it's, it's all very speculative, really. And and I think the timing of it is the key. We may not know the answer to this for quite some time, so by definition, it's going to put it into next year's budget.
Right, but but it's something we certainly have to be wary of that we could we could find ourselves with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense that was not budgeted and we might have to rob Peter to pay Paul, so to speak.
Yep, yeah, we'll just manage it as it really.
Thank you. I appreciate.
Any other questions on the budget of the summary? Otherwise, I'd touch on some of these other areas. The transfers report reflects just a few things that are cropping up here towards the end of the year, such as unexpected repairs that were necessary. And as far as the Health Insurance Reserve Report, when we had our last meeting and agreed on the final amount to contribute to that, at that time, I was anticipating that our our year-end June thirtieth balance would be about one point two million. Predicting one month is extremely difficult. But I would say that, given what I know, we're probably going to be right around there, one point one to one point two million for that final June thirtieth balance, which is in line with where we had expected a month ago when we had this discussion and the decision that was made in regards to budget contributions to the fund, to the health reserve fund. And that's all I have to.
And and Scott, that was around what a four percent for the healthcare reserve?
I think it was four and a half months, if memory serves.
Four and a half, yeah.
Six months.
Six, okay, all right. All right, and claims look like they were, again, very low in the last.
Yeah, the May, May claims were were, yes, also very low, materially lower even than our year-to-date average. But that doesn't really, June could really truly be the opposite, could be the complete opposite of that, as we see reopening and availability now, medical services that to the extent that elective things were being pushed out and deferred, they may well be coming back in in June. And we'll have to wait to see those claims come in in a couple of weeks.
And then I just had one question on the transfers, the repairs for the boiler, was that routine maintenance or emergency fix? Any concerns there?
Walter could speak to it more, but this was the boiler fuel pump repair that was done, but I'm pretty sure that was an emergency.
And Walter is online if you needed to unmute him to ask specifics.
Walter is nodding and mouthing, yes.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, thank you.
Well, Todd, I have just one quick question for Scott. So Scott, remind me, Brown and Brown's claims review, that that's going to happen in the summer, right, to reset the, I I don't remember the timing. For the, I don't know if they were looking at claims through the year end or if that's not until we set the next year's budget.
I I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to.
Yeah, yeah, the actual claims going forward, right? So they they look at the actual claims against the reserve and then the next time they look at it is not until budget time when we set, right? Thanks.
All right, board members, any other questions? Any other administrative reports? I think we've covered all that were in the materials.
I I believe that Dr. Pearson Ugo will be addressing the the diversity question and the reopening question in agenda items, so we could probably move forward.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, then our next item on the agenda is item six, committee reports. And the board members have any committee reports? Is there, could I ask two on the superintendent search or if, I I don't think we had too many committees meeting since the last time we met as a board, but.
Yeah, so I think everyone received an an email giving you the most updated dates relating to the search and as we appointed or approved at the last meeting, Joe Arardi is doing the search for the three districts and has been moving forward with establishing dates for focus groups with all the stakeholders and and as I said, I think board members received an update with all the relevant dates moving forward. Again, the hope is to try and the the hope is that the pool will be very deep and that we can find the right candidate in a short timeframe. But we will determine that once the applicants start coming in, you know, the applications.
Oh, Mike, I did have a question that a member of the PTSA asked at what point, I guess that how will that organizational or how will the community be engaged? Is it through 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 Joe? Will Joe would just be contacting people directly?
So so there there will be dates for community session where they they will be able to speak with Joe and give input and guidance relating to their preferences for the type of qualities for the can for a superintendent candidate. So so they they will have an opportunity as will the staff in all the schools, as will the elected leaders in each of the towns. So all the stakeholder groups will get time with the consultants to give input and 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 feedback.
There is also a community survey that is going to be circled.
Correct, yes, that that will be circulated, yes.
Thank you. Any other committees? Don't think any other met besides the search committee. The policy is always meeting, right?
No, policy is actually going to reconvene, though.
Okay, great.
Policy is is coming back.
Okay, excellent. I look forward to reviewing more policies as they come out of the committee.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, let's move on to the next item, item seven, discussion, possible action. Our first one, item A, recognition of retiring faculty, and I'm going to turn it over to Gina. And let me see. Get cohort here so you can share. So are you, are you good to share there? Otherwise, I've got your presentation.
I am. Let me just see if it went through. There we go. So I put together just a few slides on to here we go, for just a a few recognitions and and we won't take too long, but it's just so important to say, recognize our retirees and also our students that graduated with top honors. So these are our students, and if you go to that website, I feel like I'm selling something. Go to the website and click on that. Click on the ceremony and you will hear all of these students' names read aloud with the universities they're attending. And we recognize our top students every year and this year I we just have just some wonderful colleges, they're going to amazing students that have done incredible things. So I do encourage you to look at that sheet because it also has the different awards they won. I know some of these names you've heard before on in in different recognitions from their portfolio and their writing to their projects and and Weller Scholarship winners. So we're very, very proud of of our of our top graduating students. We also wanted to bring your attention to our students entering the armed services. Again, in our ceremony, these students' names are all read aloud and we are just so grateful, grateful for their service and and they're so young and to commit themselves to the values and ideals that our country was founded upon is is inspiring to all of us. So we we thank those students. What we really wanted to do also is take a moment to highlight some of our retiring faculty. So our first retiree that you see here is Rosemary Reber. And she was, has been our transition coordinator at Joel Barlow High School. She's been with us for twenty one years. The JBEA, that's the Teachers Union Association, put together a wonderful retirement celebration. I know Todd was there and they do that every year. This is the first time we've ever tried to do it on Zoom. But such beautiful things were said about all of our retirees and you learn so much from from just hearing about them and and hearing about their lives, the pictures that you're seeing. This is from our yearbook. This is tradition. Every year, our faculty that are retiring faculty and staff get to submit pictures and do a little write-up. And one of the the things Rosemary put in her write-up here, and she also said it in that Zoom retirement, is, you know, do what you love and love what you do. And I, that smile that you see in every one of these pictures is Rosemary. We will miss her. She has been Catherine Nuzzo's partner, I was going to say Partner in Crime. They have done so much in our school with the Unified Program that Pollinator Garden. And so so those, that legacy is going to live on and we are really grateful for for Rosemary and for her service. Charlie Dietlick, Charlie Dietlick is is old, old school is cool when you're in Charlie Dietlick's class. For seventeen years, he's been with us. He teaches physical science and earth dynamics. And and again, such wonderful things. I'm getting a terrible echo now. I don't know why. A just wonderful things that were that were spoken about Charlie and and just his belief in every student, every day. And I know we say that in, but there are there were plenty of students who who probably gave up on on science, especially that ninth grade science. It's such a tough year. But Charlie never gave up on any one of those students and he's an avid fisherman, so we just can't wait to to see more pictures of of what he is going to catch and and of course, Charlie, it's it's a double loss for us because Linda Dietlick, his lovely wife, is one of our subs and has been a long-term sub and has filled out, filled in for us many, many times. So Charlie will will definitely be missed. And then this slide just hurts to put in, Patty is such a mainstay of of our program. The dedication, thirty two years, and she's she's on her way out retiring and yet she's still calling in from vacation and and doing everything she can to set that department up to be successful. She is leaving us after thirty two years of service and, you know, what, there are so many things that make Patty special and and an incredible educator. And I I think I can distill it all down to whatever Patty does, whatever decision she makes, whatever board report she prepares, it's with the student right in the center. That's the way she plans her budget. That's the way she plans the programs and runs PPTs and and hires staff. So she is sorely going to be missed. We are interviewing candidates for the Director of Special Education. It's taken me a while to realize I'm just never going to find a Patty, but there are some wonderful candidates out there, so we're excited about that search and and her mentorship of Dave DeAngelo is the department chair there. It was it was, it was very sad at that Zoom meeting to realize that we were honoring Patty as she was retiring too. But her beautiful grandchildren were online waving and and that makes it all worthwhile. And then we have to acknowledge our retiring superintendent. This picture is so special for me. This picture is so special for me because you all know that I have known Tom for what 35 of his 36 years in in education, when we both started out together as as young teachers and our paths crossed with this lady who is in the hat Diana Mattern, Diana Lindsay Mattern. And she is the one who brought us both into administration out of the classroom. So 13 years here. In putting together this slide, I had to put in the Falcon because Tom is Barlow. The contributions he made. He, you know, we say at Barlow, oh, if you're really a Barlow person, you bleed black and gold. And, you know, next to Mike Santangeli, I think Tom bleeds black and gold. And so we will miss his leadership, will miss his his vision. He set us up very well and and I thank him personally for his his faith and confidence in my leadership and and his ability to to step back and let our leadership team, this next generation of Barlow leader shine. And so I'm so grateful for that and grateful for his mentorship over the years. All of our graduates, all of our retiring staff members will receive a diploma. So Todd, those diplomas came in. They were delayed, so we've got new ones for you to sign. And we used to do these big, huge frames for for people. And then I forgot a few years back, someone said, you know, do you just have that nice diploma case? Because that was was more apt. So they will all get a an honorary Barlow diploma as soon as we get them all signed. So I thank them for their service. Thank you, board, for allowing me just these few minutes to honor all these amazing people who have made up the fabric of everything we we believe and aspire to in our Region Nine school system. I am grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. And again, on behalf of the board, I do want to thank Patty and Tom Rosemary Charlie for all their service. And also for congratulations again to the top 20 students. Very proud of them and and all of the graduates from 2020. And especially for the server, the students going into the military service. So thank you from the board collectively. All right, moving on, we'll go to the next item, summer capital improvement projects and governance. So I requested this one on because our last meeting or meeting or two ago, we've had a few special meetings in between, but we had some discussion around some capital improvement projects that we might need to start over the summer or start planning for. And I know we've with everybody's schedules and everything going on, we've not been able to get a fields committee meeting set up. So I did want to talk as a collective board around these projects. Mike and Walter and see, you know, there's, you know, how we want to proceed and Scott with these, you know, if we're ready to move forward or we need to do some more work in Fields Committee. Just so again, we can have a bit of public discussion around the projects. There were like three of them, I believe, on the table with the HVAC for the gym and the other gym project, some air purification and some flooring work. I think we're on the table the last time you met. So I'm just open it for discussion, just so we can, you know, again, have public clarity on what we're doing around these projects if we're going to start them delay. So I'll just open it up for discussion. Walter or Mike, if you want to give us an update on where we're at on these and we can talk as a board as as how we want to move forward.
Probably best if I do. So where we left off that field facilities committee meeting was the three projects, as you identified, one of them focused on air quality work in the amazing cafeteria, the second being air purification work throughout the building and the third of flooring project. I believe the direction of the committee was to pursue those first two in tandem. And to pursue the third one over as a as a third priority, not necessarily specifically in the summer. That was my recollection of the of the priorities that were discussed in that committee meeting. So the next step to do that really would be given the magnitude of the spend for each of these, the projects were estimated at approximately $600,000, five to $600,000 for the cafeteria and gym work that I mentioned. Approximately $165,000 for the air purification work and then the flooring work was about 260. But as I say, that was, I believe, considered to be a lower priority or a slower track project to undertake. But given the magnitude of the spend on those, we would in fact need to go out to bid for each of those, which requires me really to drive the bid process. Frankly, in the 30 days since we've had that meeting, I've had five night meetings, three budgets finalized, one of them as recently as two weeks ago, which is work that's frankly usually complete seven weeks ago in this by this time in the calendar year. And all of the other COVID driven work, I've not been able to initiate any of it at this point. So that's really the gate to enable this work to go forward at this point. And so that's where we are.
You did, Todd.
Sorry, Mike, for the Fields Committee then is I know we were trying to get a meeting set. Do we want to try to continue to pursue that to discussion and look at a timeline for these projects? Then I know there was a bit of urgency, you know, trying to do the the air purification, the HVAC, you know, before its goal for COVID related safety precautions. But it sounds like I think these need to go back to committee, look at timeline, RFP and and so forth, and then bring them back.
I mean, it's fine. I'm always happy to look at, but I don't know where timeline fits in. You know, again, we were, we were hopeful that we might be able to get them done this summer. But obviously, Scott has been dealing with, you know, lots of unforeseen issues that have, you know, created somewhat of a hurdle for for getting RFPs and stuff done. I guess that, you know, the hope of the committee is still to get this done as soon as we could. But I think, yes, the the window is rapidly shutting on the summer. So I don't know, you know, whether RFPs and all that can be written and done and equipment. You know, within within the timeframe, I know there are ways to get it done and there is a consideration that has to be given in that. You know, discussions and maybe, you know, Mike can speak to this, but do you use the gym day one of opening of school? Or could work start and conclude after, you know, a week or two of school? Is that better than not doing it? Can can this stuff still be done? Is there a way? You know, and again, I don't want to I I play co-pilot on the bus. I don't on the plane. I don't want to try and fly. I, you know, I have to be careful, but I am willing to help guide us in any way that that everyone wants to go. But I think those are the decisions as to how what is the urgency and what is the our ability to be able to get to the next step. And all of that kind of hinges on what is the urgency as far as the schools is concerned as to how quick does it need to be done? And is it better to, you know, maybe go into the school year with some of the things still being finished up? Or is that kind of out of the question? And those are not questions that I can answer, though I'm happy to lend guidance if if anyone, you know, so.
I guess, Mike Santangeli, any, I guess, any comment? I mean, because again, you know, the HVAC is over the gym and the gym floor might have a pretty significant impact if we get that project started and not finished.
Cafeteria, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I the I guess, you know, the good news in this whole thing, we're not going to be into the gyms till August 3rd. So I don't know what the turnaround time is to get HVAC going or anything like that. Plus, we have two gyms. So as far as athletics is concerned, we'll be able to get, you know, early volleyball in the upper gym for practices, but it's when the competition season starts that is going to become an issue. The competition season starts in the, you know, the second week of September. So if we get it done by then, we should we should be good. I mean, we can we can work around everything until that point. So you know, just speaking for myself, I'm hopeful that it can be turned around and done quickly, but I just don't know how that works. But as far as athletics is concerned, we have flexibility and obviously in the wellness end too with PE, we can work around that as well for, you know, the first week or week and a half of school as well. But at that point, I think it gets a little more difficult.
Okay, Gwen, I saw your.
But I I'm I'm thinking, you know, if it's at all possible, it would be just really good to get this done this year if we still can. You know, even if it was, you know, inconvenient for a couple of weeks at the beginning of the year because we'd have the benefit then for the rest of the school year, especially with the improved ventilation situation, which I think is really important health and safety wise. And, you know, as as much as that is a hard cutoff as far as when that season starts to have all that stuff done for the rest of our, knock on wood, seasons for basketball and and everything else that's coming up in the year. If there's any way we can get it done, I'd support that for sure.
I agree. So I guess for this one, I don't think there's any decision we need to make right now. I would suggest we go back to the facilities committee and have them, you know, take a look at this. And I know we've been trying to convene a meeting, but having them, you know, again, kind of take a look at this, figure out schedule, working with Scott around, you know, when we can get RFPs out and looking at the feasibility, you know, if if we can get any or partial of these done, you know, before we reopen and then finish them out later, if we can get them all. And I know it's a tight timeline.
Todd, I think you probably should go as soon as you can to to that conversation. And I do want to put in an appeal that part of the planning take that you take into account is what we've been asking of Scott and Stephanie and Vicky for the last three months, and you have got to give them some downtime. So if this project, these projects are going forward, Scott cannot be the project manager for them. It's just, he's already working 12, 13 hour days for the last several months. And I just want to make sure that that there's a time budget that allows for doability.
I hear you. So we will, again, I think unless any of the board members object, we'll put this back into committee, we'll try to have flexibility and schedules. Now, we were trying to schedule the meeting prior to this meeting, and it was just too difficult with schedule. So try to get something put together around it and if the board can work on attending that the members on the field many and you know, we'll try to work through this and come back with if we can get this started this year.
So so what is the the direction then? Because, um.
Well, I think we're going to look at the projects, what needs to go out to RFP and what's a timeline if we have to go out to RFP. And then, you know, again, if we don't have Scott's availability, you know, what what is the impact on going out to RFP bid on these? And, you know, timeline to get the work, you know, when we expect the whole RP process and all that. Because there are three different, totally different projects, I think, on the list here, right? It's not just one one small timeline. It's going to be three different vendors and different.
I think really it's can be done as two projects. Because I think that the gym
Yeah, maybe a gym and.
Cafeteria are are both HVAC projects. And they could, that can be done concurrently as one project that includes both of those areas.
Okay, well, again, I think, again, you know, that's something let's let's have the the committee look at and then come back with that. Because, yeah, if we can bundle them and get them done, then that that's better.
Right. So when I say what is the direction of the board? I I've done a few of these. Okay. And when I say your window is closing, I'm telling you, your window is closing. And so is it the wish of the board to get these things done this year and to figure out a way that it's not impactful on Scott to try and get these things done? Or is the direction to pump the brakes and wait until a time when Scott has less on his plate to be able to write RFPs and push the project out? And that's the reason I ask it that way is because it, you know, if if we have an FFC meeting and then we discuss it, then we're going to have to come back to the board and get some sort of a direction from the board. And then we're going to have to go get, you know, it we're delaying it. We we kind of have to make a decision now as to what is the priority, what is our direction, which which is the way that you want, that the board wishes us to move forward?
Yeah, I have the exact same concern that we're going to spend two weeks trying to schedule a meeting and then, you know, it's already June 23rd. You know, we're talking about getting this done in a couple of months. It's it's really, really tight already. So I think, yeah, I think if we're going to do it, we need to we need to figure out a way to do it without without burdening Scott. I don't know what the I don't know what the options are for that, but.
Well, and and so then the question arises is, is Scott comfortable not flying the plane? Because nobody wants to overstep here. So that's that's the question, right?
One of the other complications is down a staff member that would have been able to have assisted in this scenario, but being down that staff member doesn't give me that flexibility. One other potential way to perhaps streamline this may go to the governance question. Perhaps delegation of authority, perhaps a iteration of policy requirements in regards to bidding could be considered. I don't have any specific recommendations. I'm trying to think of things as we're in the middle of this conversation now. But the things that take time are the reviews and approvals, and they are necessary. But perhaps we can consider some form of an expedited or blanket approval approach that allows for speed within appropriate guidelines. I think that's perhaps a topic for more exploration.
So so just to not being on the FFC, I'll 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 make a comment from as a board member, again, without stepping bounds. Again, we don't want to, our role is one of governance, not one of management. But to that extent, you know, I I think I'm hearing some perhaps flexibility on the part of the administration to be able to explore perhaps leveraging the FFC if that is an option, because that sounds like that's the only option to the extent the board wants to try to start this project this summer. So I mean, I think, you know, certainly if that's the way, if the administration is comfortable with that, again, as Mike and Gwen said, we don't want to overstep, then it sounds like the FFC is willing to roll a little bit more sleeves than they normally do. But Mike, Gwen, I hear your concern, right? You know, and I probably have similar concerns when it gets to the next agenda item. So it's a fair discussion point to have. We don't want to burden the administration. But at the same token, we're happy to help, you know, when you think it's appropriate for us to do that, particularly now because of the situation with with COVID.
I I will tell you, I I think that it's a bridge too far this summer. In my opinion, you are going to be bringing on board the new replacement for Oliver Crouch. You're going to be bringing on board a new superintendent. You have the reopening plans, which will take up the full attention of of the administrators between now and and the opening of school. And we're still waiting on greater clarity from the state on that. And now you're going to layer on, I think, properly, a task force or attention to the issues that have been raised so eloquently earlier today. I just I I just don't see that there's the capacity to do all of those things and also try to get the HVAC in. I would suggest respectfully that you defer the entire thing for a year.
But will that be an issue healthwise for the way that the system is right now?
Yes, I have that question, too.
Well, it's it's I guess Walter could could speak to that, but it's it's the way it is right now is the way it's been for years, right?
But it's a different situation that, you know, we're in right now.
Yep. Yep.
If I could real quick, the air purification, um, that can actually be done piecemeal unit by unit. Um, you know, within classroom, within within rooftop units, that's the much easier one. The bigger problem that we have is the HVAC in the cafeteria and the gym. Um, Mike's familiar, both Mikes, Mike is very familiar with the uh gym and Mike DiAgostino is very familiar with the uh cafeteria problems. Uh, that we've had, you know, with those units. Um, those are much more difficult for the simple fact that. Um, a lot of crane work involved. We can't have people in those sections of building. Um, that would have to be done, you know. Doing that work, you can't do it in an occupied building. Um. So, you know, that one, that one we'd either have to do now, you know, make a decision to go forward and see what we could do. Even that section of it, the HVAC, uh, the rest of the gym work could be done. Um, probably piecemeal throughout, although it wouldn't be ideal. The air purification we could do. In piecemeal throughout the um, you know, at any point.
Well, that that it sounds like again, there's there's no health and safety issue. Um, it it definitely would help the air quality. Um, you know, with with COVID and so forth, but um, uh, to me, it sounds like we could probably delay these with everything else that we have going on. Um, the FFC FFC could look at it for, you know, startup in over next year over the summer. And we do have the money, you know, set aside in the capital to do these projects. Um, and I I do think by the time we get a meeting arranged. Uh, we figure out the RFP timeline, get an RFP out, we're gonna be into the startup school. So it doesn't seem very feasible, although I'd like to get them started. Um, I I just think even even expediting it, I think it's gonna be a real challenge. Um, and we don't end up, you know, probably just piecemealing the air purification if 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 that. So I don't know if for other important, um Gina.
Yeah, the the only comment I would make, and I certainly understand uh about our full plates is. My concern that's in the back of my mind is that unknown of um, am I going to have to use the cafeteria space more than I would? Because that's an area where I could spread students out. Um, am I going to have to use the gym? For instruction, not necessarily for PE classes, and then you're talking about a uh a a place with. Um, less than than optimal um airflow and and air quality. So it it's just another thing to throw out there.
Sure.
To think about, and we don't know, we don't know what the spacing requirements are. The state could come down and say everyone's eating in classrooms. Um, or we are um having so many waves in the cafeteria that students will be in there um all day long.
That's a good point. Um, we need the extra space for classrooms. Um, so I don't have any other board member feels. So I go ahead.
It has to be livable space. I mean, you can't be in that gym with the doors closed.
Yeah.
Um, that's not a, that's not a. It's warm and muggy.
Yeah, yes. Um, all right. So I I guess again, my sentiment, we let's let's send it to the committee, but not look to start up these projects for the summer. Um, but to go through, you know, the proper planning to start them, uh, you know, for next summer. Unless any board member feels really strongly, we should push to add it on to the everything else for the summer and try to get, you know, whatever we can install. I I see the push symbol there. All right. All right. So why don't we do that? Let's um, it seems like consensus there then. So we'll push the projects. Um, again, we'll have the fields committee go through and and look at it with uh an idea to get them started. Um, at 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 the earliest at next summer. Um, if not earlier, if we can piecemeal in the filtration systems, but otherwise. Um, let's not start these projects up right now. Is there any objections? All right. All right. So let's move um on to the next item, uh item C. Um, the review of diversity and curriculum and summer reading lists. Um, and I'll just open this to discussion. I think there are a couple of things. Um, um, you know, we we do have the task force that was uh created. Um, by the other two boards that we should look at our participation in or not. And then also around, you know, all the the great uh feedback and suggestions and comments that we got from students. And former students around review of curriculum and how we'd like to um, you know, look through that and. Uh, take any of those items under consideration. Um, so I'll open it up for discussion, but I think, you know, we for a decision we we should look at, again, the task force and if we wanted to join that, that would be one. Decision I would want to see is make this evening. Um, Mike, I saw your hand up for comment.
All right, it seems like, is it because I'm on the top that my hand always goes up first?
Yeah, yeah.
The one who's speaking first. Um, so I I would, I would say this, I'm uh. I'm happy to to have representatives from our board on this task force. I think the task force is something that um has a more uh broad. Uh, scope to uh what it's gonna accomplish or try to accomplish. And while I have some reservations about how the structure and and who's exactly going to be, again, flying the plane. Um, I I do think that it's it's a good thing. However, I think that uh. As a region nine board member, uh, I would also favor a streamlined approach towards. Uh, revision of our curriculum and a uh, you know, a uh improvement of our diversity and inclusion. Uh, um, aspects of our curriculum and and of our student life. And for that, I am going to defer and say that I completely trust our curriculum committee. To work with our administrators and our staff and that I think it's enough for us to. Express our uh concern and hope for an urgent uh kind of uh approach to this. And when I say that in my in my opening board member comments, I I think we need to move quickly but thoroughly. I don't want to. Jump and and just to jump, I I want to, I want to, you know, but but I do think. That this task force could take a considerable amount of time to be able to affect things in the high school. And so I think that my position would be, I think that we do it concurrently. I think that we have members. On the task force, but I would also. Uh, favor having our curriculum committee and a group of administrators work to. Um, revise the curriculum and to and to improve our our inclusion and diversion uh diversity uh. Um, instruction, that's that's my position.
And I I I've opened it for other members, but I I agree, I I I don't see this as, you know, task force or. Curriculum, I I see both of these, they should be going in parallel. Um, it will take time for the task force to, you know, determine their charge and. Uh, members and get meetings going and then things to get implemented back in where our curriculum committee could start looking at some of the suggestions. Um, and some of the other ideas that the administration has um and and start looking at that. I mean, we've already started seeing some reading lists and things like that. So there's a lot of. There's a lot of work we could do in in parallel um to improve and change things. So. Um, I I agree, I think we should look at doing both both items.
Right, and not minimize the task force because. Good things could come out of the task force that eventually get transitioned into the curriculum as well. I just think, like I said, that.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Yeah.
At the same.
Fastest route to change is through the curriculum committee.
Yeah, right. And curriculum, um, you know, the task force will look at other things outside of curriculum as well, right? So that would be outside of the bounds. So discussions around uh SRO or um other, you know, additional training and things like that. Um, conferences, so forth, right? That's probably outside of curriculums purview. That the task force could provide ideas that we could bring back to other committees or to the full board.
And ultimately, it's gonna make recommendations that can't implement them, whereas we can go a little further than that.
Yes. Other um, other board members thoughts? Comments?
Well, just as a member of the curriculum committee, I'd be happy to help. Um, in any way possible. Um, and you know, we'd have to go under the guidance of Stephanie because she knows best. Um. And just any support that we can give um. So that we can increase the diversity inclusion. And I, you know, I I agree, we should do the concurrently, we should have the task force, we should be um, have representation on it. Encourage it, I clearly it's necessary. Um, and also, you know, as the curriculum committee, we can. Do what we can do to help out.
Yeah, actually, like I like the two, I like the dual tracks because the the curriculum committee has to meet, we haven't reconstituted since the board reconstituted, so we have to meet anyway. And, you know, there might be some actionable items that we could advance through the budget budget process. You know, and then concurrently, if the task force does, if we decide to join the task force and task force does. Think of or come up with community wide ideas, we can actually follow two tracks. So I think that this might give us a nice opportunity to. Have short term wins, so to speak, and then long term sustainable changes. So I think that's good. And I think we might be able to, you know, in terms of the our earlier discussion on. Staffing, we could probably get creative about scheduling it if if people are at open to it in terms of, you know. Joint, the joint task force, trying to have combined meetings where where it makes sense across all three, all three districts. So certainly willing to to do that or split up resources, you know, as. If or when the task force comes up with different paths, so to speak, that become narrow and focus in terms of curriculum that can get sent over to a committee meeting and then. You know, at least the the staff won't be stretched in all different kinds of direct and directions, perhaps then. Gina, you can and Stephanie and Tom, you could then divert different folks to different initiatives.
All right, other comments? Otherwise, we probably need a couple of motions.
I I I would like. To say that I do, uh, uh, well, first off, uh, I'd want to acknowledge the comments that were made at the beginning of this. Um, evening's meeting and thank all of our current and former students and also comments that were made at the. Um, at the Eastern Reading Board meeting last week. Um, particularly, I'm grateful to uh Leila Arisi uh for the conversation that. That we had uh and to Julianne Lica Melly for coordinating and and um and and sharing with us. Uh, I I do think you want to uh espouse both a let's act right now. Through the curriculum committee, but I also want to encourage Region Nine to view this as uh pre K through twelve. Uh, and also uh within the larger community. So I would suggest uh it would be well worth it to have. Um, liaisons or representatives on a community wide task force. Uh, and uh and then, but also we can, we don't have to wait, uh, because there are things we can do, we can move forward. Uh, and that will mean um, looking at the resources we've made available to Dr. Pearson Ugle and perhaps being willing to. Advance um this issue um for such things as summer curriculum work. I do believe that um, we all know the state of this budget. How tightly uh it was developed and the stressors that have been placed on it um in in the spring and up till. Uh, the judge's ruling we spoke about earlier, so I. I I do want to put a plea in that we think as a community, not as Region Nine, as a whole community about how to get resources. Um, that can be uh brought to bear on these uh on this topic. Um, and I I I'm gonna diverge for just a second and I apologize in advance. Back in November, we looked at the results of the survey of our team. And uh, there was a lot of work done by Eastern Reading Community Coalition. There was a lot of concern raised and that group has gone on to do a lot of good stuff. Um, but if it languishes as a volunteer basis, even with the best of intentions, getting folks together and making it move forward. Is is always an ongoing challenge. We were all of us very concerned about. What we heard about the eighth, tenth and twelfth graders uh reporting uh to us on self injurious uh thoughts or or actions. And uh, and the reason I'm I'm citing that and bringing it up is in the absence of of funding, it's hard to take swift action. So part of what I think we need to think about is uh is to ask Dr. Pearson Ugle. Between now and and the next two months, what what does she need so that we can move this forward? Because I. I I know the uh, the department chairs and some of the leaders at Barlow. We met on Monday, uh, had a Zoom call that Gina coordinated and there's a real desire to hear. Uh, and listen and take appropriate uh action. We we, the the people we want to turn to are the faculty members among others. So uh, this is my plea for uh, yes, do a curriculum committee work and get that underway, but also do. The broader work of the community and and think about how to provide funding.
I'd like to share some thoughts as well, if if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I I first want to acknowledge and and thank those who spoke at the start of the meeting for. For the reflections and for the thoughtful comments and and also from the board members. I I frankly think this is just too important a topic for our students. Our staff and our communities for me to provide a plan in haste for addressing concerns regarding multicultural literacy. Civics and social justice education and simply move forward too quickly. Our first priority is to listen. I've been doing a lot of listening in the last couple of weeks. Conducting focus groups about distance learning and reopening planning. And during those meetings, it's ti- it's at times when it's tempting to respond to concerns. With a quick answer or corrective information that makes sense on some level, but also lacks the needed recognition. That a concern from one individual represents that person's voice from their experience. Recently, I listened to a speech by Chip Amanda Adici about the danger of a single story, which it was referenced again this evening. Specifically, she spoke about the danger of a single story about people of color and the consequences of a narrow view of the world. It resonated with me because as educators, we do have the ability to ensure. That our students are not creating an understanding of history, of families or just different perspectives through a single story. As an education community, we are rocked by the stories of racism and lack of social justice being voiced across our country. And more specifically in our towns, by parents, by students, by teaching professionals. We need to listen to different voices from different perspectives and consider how to support and move forward that includes a review. Of the K through twelve curriculum across content areas, professional learning activities, including professional reading. And opportunities to gather input from parents, students and staff to inform future plans. Our ability to fully address the topic will be shaped by the ability and commitment to carve out adequate time. Secure needed resources for curriculum revisions, professional learning speakers, consultants, required staff reading. And include diverse voices in our planning. I suggest the tentative timeline as follows. Beginning immediately, June, summer into fall. We review current curriculum, including student text resources by course. And the summer reading list and past professional learning and professional reading. We convene a Region Nine Board of Ed Curriculum Committee to consider revision. Of the committee charge to include student and parent representatives. We create a curriculum review goal. Moving into fall, I suggest that we convene the Region Nine Board of Ed Curriculum Committee. To include possible diversity, multicultural education consultants to review and provide input regarding curriculum committee goal. And specific work that will include review of the existing curriculum, review of the summer reading list. Review of library materials and process for ordering. Review professional learning activities, create action plan for curriculum development. Create action plan for professional learning, create action plan for community forums and presentations. And then set late spring twenty twenty one date for review of progress. In the spring, I suggest that we convene a joint. I suggest that we convene a joint meeting of the Boards of Education Committee. Of curriculum committee to review the vertical alignment of the curriculum K through twelve. At that point, we can review progress, make recommendations as needed. Gather additional input from staff, parents and students. And then moving into the summer to begin the cycle again to revisit the initial goal that was set. And revise our action plans.
And I I would say that's a, you know, thank you for laying out the timeline. It doesn't preclude, of course, that going into the fall. The administration at the high school, the faculty can be engaging in. The the other elements of raising awareness and education and. And aligning other things that are that are a more comprehensive view than simply the curriculum and. Material choices, and I know that Gina and I have already talked about some of those things.
Cheryl, did you want to?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the one thing I will add, though, to the extent that there's. Enthusiasm right now, there's been a number of volunteer resources at town. And I'll I'll specifically talk about the police department that that Heather Whaley mentioned in her. Opening comments, they're willing to fund out of their budget with respect to to resources. Some educational programming or some initiatives that perhaps it be a task force initiative. But I do want to emphasize that there could be. Short term activities that again will drive awareness as we try to evaluate whether or not we want to make long term changes to the curriculum. So I don't want to lose sight, you know, obviously, the end goal is just, you know, enhance education for all. But I think there might be some short term items that. Again, I'm I'm agnostic as to whether or not it's a task force that moves it forward faster or or the curriculum committee meeting, but I think there are a lot of. People within the community that are either willing to donate their time, the resources, or in the case of the police departments, the money from their from their budgets that are already approved. To be able to fund educational initiatives as as it relates to diversity and inclusion, so. I I just wanted to emphasize to the board and administration that there are other ways that we can do that. As we develop our long term objective, which I completely agree with that everybody outlined, so, but I I want to be able to have. Use utilize both groups that we made that region I may establish to drive. Short term wins and long term wins.
I agree with all that.
Mike, you had a comment?
Yeah, so um. I agree with what Cheryl's saying and and I certainly. Understand what Stephanie and and Tom are saying. I guess my perspective is, could you imagine what would happen? If all the governors said that we were going to review. Police tactics for the next year and implement them the following year. There would be outrage, there people, this demands action now, okay? This, this is something that needs to be addressed right away now. I am not suggesting that you do a wholesale change and then you try to do everything in two days and everything, but. It is certainly not the type of matter that you sit back on and you evaluate for an entire year. Okay, my perspective is, we have one point seven million dollars that we're going to disperse to two towns. And we have. Glaring needs that the community is is asking us for, that are alumni that that. You know, these are things that are generations behind that that need to be done. And I don't understand why we can't just say. Look, let's start some sort of a committee, a a. A curriculum revision committee where we're going to need. However, many administrators and maybe a few lead teachers. And how many days are they going to need in the summer, are they going to need three or four days? And let's convene the first meeting before June thirtieth. And the charge of the meeting carries through the summer so that we could appropriate. The funds to be able to do this work this summer. Because I just think that, you know, we owe it to our students, we owe it to the community. We owe it to black Americans to do something, we can't just sit back and wait. Even if, you know, and I know we can do small little things, but but. We we need to try and move this thing quickly, we need to try, and again, quickly, but carefully. But I don't think this warrants sitting back for a year and evaluating it, I I would favor a more aggressive timeline.
But Stephanie, I don't think you were advocating we wouldn't implement anything until a year from now, I, you know. My understanding is, as we, you know, made decisions on programming curriculum, you know, we tried to implement things as as we go.
Absolutely, so I I believe that I said that we had already started the review. So we have brought in teachers, our department chair for humanities, we've had a number of administrative meetings already. Some of the changes can be made without. Convening the full curriculum committee to say we've made this major adjustment in the course objectives. And therefore, the curriculum committee needs to approve them. When we're talking about changing out selected readings, that's that's the good work that our teachers do. In a very dynamic process, so much of that can and will happen over this summer to be implemented next year, so I do apologize if that was not clear in my comments.
And I guess to Mike's point. For work over the summer to start, you know, things immediately. Is there funding that's needed that we could pull out of the unexpended funds right now? When we get into next fiscal year, as we look at changes and the task force comes back with things and community funding, we'll deal with those, but. You know, to get things rolling right now, I know the curriculum committee needs to meet, but. For pulling people together, as Mike was suggesting at the end of June and over the summer. Have i- is there any funding that's needed for that that we could, you know, allocate from the unexpended?
Yes, our humanities chair is already in the process of organizing summer curriculum work that will occur. This week and for the start of next week, and that was already planned and. The region nine budget had adequate money to fund the start of that work. There is also work that's planned over the summer, I think Scott could speak to this more directly. But I'm not sure that you can use money from this year for work that won't occur by the teachers until. The next fiscal year, but there is budget money for curriculum work to occur now, as you know. Our teachers are also doing a lot of curriculum work to plan for reopening next year. And that's on another level, so could we use more funding next year? Yes, we most likely will, and in a number of different categories, I think that the time has really been booked for this week and next week, and we did give this some thought. When we reviewed the unspent funds for this year and planned accordingly.
Which is, I I I I apologize because I want to do this work, I want you to jump into it, but I also don't want you to. Kill your administrators in trying to do all these things. The the, that's why I think you should get your curriculum committee convened, so you can do the things that we can do right away and then follow. Stephanie's timeline, and I I also think that that the task force should be saying to the town. Turn around and give some of that money right back to us so that we can do other things this summer. But I'm also going to say again that. Dr. Pearson Ugle has not had a day off in three months. And and we've got to give her and, you know, we just got to give, we can't just plow forward. They've got to have a few days off that just just out of basic human decency. And I think you'd get a more dynamic energized leadership if if we if we did those things. So that's why I think you need to take both both approaches, ask the town for more funds. Get the libraries involved, do a summer read, get some funding to to have community conversations. Get your teacher leaders involved in that and your teachers and so forth, I see Gina's.
I did, because because I'm itching to acknowledge what we what we do have and on, we've got a meeting, actually Thursday. There is a group that was begun in the beginning of this year, actually, it was last summer, it started to convene. Through the League of Women Voters and through the Mark Twain Library. And it's called Conversations in a Brave Space. And they have run several meetings, very successful town conversations, bringing in speakers about things like. Compassion and racism and white supremacy. They were effective, they brought a speaker to Barlow, Dr. Charles Do. And we had great plans to continue this work into the spring and then in March, everything stopped. So Jen Damaris is getting that group together again this Thursday, I believe, we're we're reconvening. And that's a wonderful partnership and just some great resources. That our League of Women Voters and the libraries have. We have a parent on that committee who also works with us through our school climate committee. And as you know, Jen Damaris is our school climate committee coordinator. A lot of what our students spoke about in hearing racial slurs and unkind language and and. Having people feel uncomfortable at at Barlow is part of that task force, so we are excited to continue that. And without COVID, you would have seen some really interesting spring things going on. But we will continue that work on through this Conversations in a Brave Space.
Is it appropriate that some members of the curriculum committee could participate in that meeting on Thursday, or is that a different?
Um, I would probably leave that up to Jen because she knows more of of what that committee is working on. It's if if there is something curricular related, then we would, and we do have a teacher involved on in Thursday as well as social studies teacher. Then it would go back again, as Stephanie mentioned, if it is a revision of curriculum. We would go back to the curriculum committee, I think what you see every year at Barlow. Our teachers, the department chairs revisit the curriculum. On our summer reading list that has been spoken about so often is revised every year. The. The the teachers look at what is going on in the world, they look at their. At their curriculum and they look at sequencing and and we have some suggestions for some significant changes and that we would take. To the curriculum committee, but that review goes on all the time and I see Jen just popped in on. And she could speak directly to that brave conversations in a brave space if you'd like to hear more about that.
Um, I would say I'd prefer to keep it to the committee that's been working overtime and has before opening it up. To more members. This is a group that. Really approached the school. Last, well, two springs ago, and we've been bringing some things into the school, it's not curriculum related, it's more of. Special programs, I guess you could call it curriculum at times. And. We're always willing to share, so once we have a program or ideas, we bring it forward to. The administration, to. To the board, to others to get feedback and then we'll move forward from there. But it's it's a an efficient group and I I'd like to keep it as an efficient group.
Yeah, just if I may, yeah, just in full disclosure, a few of the people in the community that reached out to me are on the league and did. Did coordinate that, I actually attended one of those, so I probably know Jen, a few of the people that are attending in those meetings. As do probably a couple of board members as well, because that this has come up in another context. And I think just in if perhaps for a future meeting, then to Karen's point, I do think that in terms of coordinating work. And not taxing the staff or not duplicating efforts. It might be helpful at some point, even if it's not, I know it's not. It it, we probably have to make it a public meeting if we had, if we had a full quorum of the committee, but perhaps just a representative on the board. So at least there's coordination, should the board decide to take up more formal changes through the curriculum committee meeting and. Should the board decide to participate in the task force, otherwise I'm concerned that we'll be duplicating efforts. Spreading ourselves too thin and then run into the resource issue that we discussed earlier, so perhaps just we could coordinate efforts as as this evolves.
Yeah, that was my thought, just so everyone's on the same page and. You know, knows what that committee is doing and what else is needed.
Maybe we could be a agenda item on the curriculum committee meeting and report to the curriculum committee what's happening. I don't know.
You don't see any benefit as to somebody.
Well, there's always a benefit. But. I I don't know, the group has been working really hard. And has been doing readings and in depth work. And so there's a lot to do to catch up, to be ready for Thursday, so.
Maybe let the committee bring it up on your Thursday meeting and see what that group of volunteers. Is is looking to do, and it is a small group and. But it's another effort of the towns that are that is that have been working toward this.
If you, if we want to take a really bold action. There is a position in the contract, the teacher's contract. Instructional leader across the disciplines, it's a person that we contemplated would be. Have an administrator's certificate, would teach a reduced load. And initially, we thought would help with teacher evaluation, but. That if the board wants to look at, maybe in July, we come back and say, this is what it would cost for you to. Create a position that's specifically tasked with managing and coordinating. Because I'm, I I I, my fear is this becomes yet one more thing that we put on. Jen and Julie to add to their ever growing list, I would love to dedicate. Staff through release time to work specifically on addressing the issues that have been raised.
The other reason that's an important position too, Tom, is because this isn't just, let's add one more book to summer reading and we are going to end white supremacy and racism. It is a cross curriculum, it's part of the fabric of Barlow. And so to look at this, how is how is this addressed? Across the discipline and through student life, I was excited when a student contacted me on. A few weeks ago to form a new diversity club at Barlow and had already reached out to a staff member to advise that club and. We are excited to get that student voice in, so so that's something we definitely can look to do.
Mike.
So, um, a couple of things, first of all. I appreciate the. Suggestion of a new position, however. I I don't think it would be a appropriate or. Be legal for us to create a new position after the formation of the budget. To put in a position that we did not ask for. Even when it's in response to something, I I I think that's. A little beyond my comfort level. But let me backtrack, it has never been my intent to overwork our staff. To make it so that. Our our. Regular work can't get done, in other words, when I'm suggesting that we need to. Act, move quickly and and have some action on this issue. It doesn't mean that we stop doing distance learning or we stop doing any of the other things we're doing and just focus on this, so. I was hopeful that maybe it would, there was a way to do it that you could compensate. Our existing staff for that continuity and to be able to do this additional work, but I fully understand. That there are certain limitations for. You know, to our staff members and and and, you know, for for their. You know, amount of time that they have, so here's another suggestion. Can we hire a consultant? That we can hire now that can come in and make suggestions, I'm sure there's. Lots of them out there right now that can make suggestions that we can do something. Actionable right away, and I understand what what Jen and what Gina are talking about. With these library initiative and and Cheryl's right, that that those are, you know. Wonderful people that we all know that are trying to make a difference. But I think that is, that's not curriculum. Maybe some of it can help guide revisions to curriculum, but that. That's great work that's outside of curriculum, what what I'm suggesting here is that. I think the community and our, our students are asking for action, asking for us to do something. And I think that we owe it to them to actually try to do something. And again, I keep saying be careful, but move quickly. I, I just, I'm, I'm flabbergasted that we're still going to take the approach that we don't have enough staff to do this. And so we're going to review it now and then we're going to meet with the curriculum committee in the, in the fall. And then we're going to hold a tri-board meeting of the curriculum committee in the, in the winter. And then next spring, we're going to revisit it. I, I think that's too long. I think we have to try and do something right away. Every year that goes by is, is a cohort of students that could benefit from, from these improvements. And so that's
Absolutely K-12, pre-K-12. So that's part of your task force work. If you, if you want to, but I, I'm, you, you have to put resources behind it. So a consultant would cost you, let's say, seven, $800 a day. If you, if you went for 50 days of consultation, plus allowances for travel and things like that, that's about what, $40,000, $45,000? I think that'd be great.
No, we can paint this in, in, in different pictures. But what I'm suggesting is this, yes, there is a certain amount of pre-K-12 continuity that needs to take place. However, I think that the revisions that will be made nine to 12 are much different than the revisions that are going to be made pre, pre, pre-K to eight. Okay? I, I think that there's a lot more sensitivity work that needs to go on pre-K eight. And I say that tongue, I don't, I don't really mean that because I think we, we need to fix that as well. But I guess what I'm saying is everything's been sugar-coated. And I think it's time to wipe the sugar off the curriculum at the high school and, and, and teach the students the real truth. And, 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 and I, I think, I think that's our duty. And I think that that's also the duty pre-K to eight. But I do think that there's a much more thought that needs to go into it. And, and the lower grades that you, you know, the being able to say it in a, in a, in a thoughtful and sensitive way, I think is important. Whereas I think nine to 12 students can more adapt to, again, wiping the sugar off.
So, so Mike, if I can.
Sorry, I, I apologize. I, I just, I, I, I think you'd just make a friendly amendment to that particular metaphor. Because when you use that metaphor, it says to me that the entire faculty is in collusion to not address history properly. And I think what we want to do is give them the tools to do that. I think that's what you're saying. And so
Absolutely. And I, and I did not say the whole staff is in collusion. I think it's a systemic problem curriculum-wise nationwide. And I think it's time again that we, we address it. I, I don't think, I, I am, I am firmly of the belief that I don't think that Barlow is, is watering things down disproportionately with everyone else. I think this is a systemic problem that's been going on, you know, nationwide for years. I just think, I would love to see us be the pioneers in addressing it.
I, I would too. And for that, we need resources.
Right, so. No, I was just gonna say, so it sounds like, I mean, the, the board's in agreement on the task force and we'll probably need to, you know, do a motion to, you know, solidify our participation there. It sounds like there's some work from curriculum that can happen, curriculum committee. It, it's still not clear to me on the resourcing side, you know, we have to make some decisions on our unexpended funds. You know, at this meeting, so Scott can make entries if we're going to set aside money to hire a consultant or, you know, pay for extra programming or something like that. That's got to be done. You know, we need to make a decision on that now. Or else we'll have to, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, you know, the accounting entries have to be done tomorrow around that. So I guess my, my question, Mike, is, you know, if, if you're advocating for a consultant, let's, you know, make a motion and set some money aside for that. Or if it's some other program that we want to happen over the summer, some extra training or stipends for people to start looking at things immediately while people are also in parallel, looking at how we open the school and scheduling and curriculum for that and distance learning. And, and, you know, having a few extra people from the departments help out or extra outside of that. You know, I think we need to make some decisions and put some money aside to help do that, right? Because the, the, the department chairs, the assistant superintendents, they've got a lot on their plate with school opening, with distance learning and what improvements and what we've learned and applying those things, because that's going to be part of it. And I do share your sentiment. We should try to do something now that we can. We just need to decide as a board, what, what is that that we can do right now? I think the, the committee and the task force and the curriculum committee, I think those are easy ones we could do. But they will take some time before they could implement it.
Right. And so I guess, you know, like, like, I, I always defer to, to our staff, our administrators to guide. I don't like to play the educator. I, I am the advocate. I am the, you know, the community representative. I, I try to ask questions that I think reflect the way our constituents feel. I would love for our, our own staff to be able to assemble actionable items that are significant, that could be in place for the start of school, that can exhibit to our community that this is something that we have addressed and that is going to be something that we are going to actively pursue and improving. But I also do not want to say that we put everything in, in the, in, in the one basket and we didn't, we're not ready for round two of distance learning or, or, you know, any of the other curriculum work that we've been doing. So what I'm, what I was looking for was if we can't do it, I still think we need to find a way to begin that work quickly. I don't think we can wait, you know, as long as it's being suggested. So if there is no way that we can do it with our existing staff, then I'm suggesting maybe we bring in a consultant. And again, we don't have to bring in a consultant for $153,000 that comes from Phoenix that we fly in. We can find someone that can come in and give us some actionable items and begin some of the work that may, you know, lay some of the groundwork and maybe work with some of our administrators to give them ideas that we can pursue further as we move along. But we need to do something now. That's my perspective.
And other board members, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, I, again, I can't make motions as a chair, but I, I would think if we want to, you know, put some motions out around, you know, putting money for consultant or for stipends or, you know, faculty to help look at this, maybe some that aren't involved right now in the distance learning or if we need more time so they can balance the distance learning and, and the other curriculum changes, I'm all for that. So.
Okay, Todd, I'll, I'll get this started. I'll, I'll move that Region Nine, join the established Joint Eastern Reading Board of Education Task Force and Diversity Inclusion to be comprised of educators, administrators, board members, members of the community to discuss and recommend actions to the boards related to the topics on, on hiring, curriculum, student demographics, and funding for diversity and anti-racism initiatives. I think that's roughly what both other, the other boards passed. So that's my motion. And I have another motion with respect to funding, but I figured I'd separate it.
Okay, I'll second your motion.
So Cheryl and Mary Lee for the second. All right. So we have the motion. Any further discussion on joining the the joint task force right now with Eastern Reading BOE on diversity and inclusion? All right, then we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor? So if I, I, raise your hand so I can count. Looking for all the board members and Cheryl can help me. I think it's everybody. Looking, it looks like everybody. So it passes unanimously to join the task force.
And just to, for procedural and to kind of save time, you should probably appoint two people to it so that, because you have to announce it at a public meeting and well, maybe not. It's a task force that's outside of the thing, but it's probably easier for you to.
Yeah, I, they, I, I don't think I've heard how many members from each of the boards need to participate or be asked to participate.
There's a minimum of two.
So it'll need to be two at least from, you know, exactly. That's where I was going. It's going to be a minimum of two from us for, one for each town.
Well, I'd like to volunteer if, if so considered.
I'd like to nominate Cheryl.
But I think, I think Todd, you have the discretion to a point, right? This would perhaps be considered an ad hoc committee of the board.
Yeah, I'll take volunteers. So I will appoint volunteers. So Cheryl from
Volunteer.
And Juliette?
Yes.
I would volunteer as well to have, if, if we could do uneven, but.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't think if it helps, like, you know, I, I was at the K-38. I think, Mike, you were too. That, that wasn't yet established. So, so certainly if, you know, you know, the board, the board is, is joining the task force, whatever that group, whenever they reconvene, I suspect that they would establish its purpose, et cetera, membership. I mean, that, yeah.
Yeah, I would think they, they would need, they don't have a charge yet. So yes, the task force would need to create their charge and bring that back to the board. And I have three volunteers. So I know we need at least two. If we need more members, then we'll, we've got at least three volunteers that I can make from, as the chair to the task force. If anybody else wants to participate, send me your name separately. All right. So, so that is for the task force.
Well, funding, so I heard an estimate out there. So it sounds like the administration and, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, overstepping here, needs some perhaps administrative support, coordination support, some type of liaison role to coordinate with the staff that's already looking at this. So, and I heard an estimate of an hourly per day that could equate to roughly $45,000. So just hearing that, that's all I'm going by. I move that the Region Nine Board appropriate $45,000 for the purposes of supporting Region Nine's efforts in diversity and inclusion. Someone can correct my motion as needed.
I, I'll second her motion, but then I, I do have
Yeah, then you have to discuss. Okay.
Yeah, we can. Yeah. So, all right. So Cheryl's motion. So, you know, it was 40, just, I'll let you take a drink there. So just, it was 45,000?
Yeah, that, that's what I heard. Tom, correct me if I'm wrong here. Estimate, so.
Oh, it's whatever we want to make. I think Tom was throwing out a number. So.
It was tied to something which Scott needs to support for accounting purposes.
So they, I, yeah, I was gonna say I had a discussion item for Scott. So let me just recap. So the motion is 45,000 just for Region Nine efforts or I don't know how you're phrasing on the N.
Curriculum revisions.
Curriculum revisions.
Related to
Diversity.
Diversity, inclusion and racism or something like that.
Okay.
But Cheryl, it's Cheryl's motion.
Sorry, I was jotting it down. Or Juliette, I don't know if you got it. Just make sure we've got.
All right, I have Region Nine to appropriate 45,000 for this curriculum revisions related to support of diversity, inclusion and racism.
Okay, got it. All right. So that's the motion on the table.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you. Yes, that's the motion by Cheryl, seconded by Mike. All right. So for discussion, I, I do have a question, I think probably got a couple of, so Scott, for the mechanics of this and, and getting this in unexpended funds.
Yeah, thank you, because that's certainly where my head is going is just to make sure I understand and it may help to inform the discussion. So for me, for purposes of holding money over, it really needs to be something that is a specific dollar amount, we've talked about that, for a specific vendor, somebody in particular that is going to be paid to perform the service or provide the good, whatever it may be. So it needs to be very discreet, but it also needs to be time-bound. You know, typically this is done in scenarios where, to take an example, you know that you have plumbing work that needs to be done. It can't be done during schools in session. We've had a lot of snow days. It can't be done in the month of June. We hold it over, the plumber's able to get back and the work gets done in the early part of August. We get the bill in the late part of August and we close it out. Right? So the time factor here is of interest to me as well, given the type of topic we're discussing. So it'd be helpful to me if I had an understanding of who and duration as a part of this conversation.
Yep, I'll be in tomorrow morning and we'll get work on that. I think we would turn to the, to a couple of different places. And obviously we only have a few days to secure somebody, but one of the regional service centers or the Anti-Defamation League or another organization of, of that nature or perhaps an expert from Columbia University or, I don't know. I, I picked the number 700 as a reasonable daily amount. Times 50 is $35,000 plus $10,000 for other expenditures. I, you know, if you want to make a bold statement, this is the way to do it. And, and the reason I came up with that number is, is I will remind the board that when we started to prepare for NEASC the last time around, and we talked about having Ann Kip, a retired assistant principal, help us with that. I remember clearly Margot Abrams, who was on the board at that time, say to the rest of, of, of the board members, something like, I work in a big corporation and you know, if we had to do ISO 9000 or something else or some big project, we would immediately put an assistant, a, a, a vice president and two secretaries on the job. And, and I'm, so I'm thinking of the complexity and the, and the, the, the nature of this work. It's more than curriculum. It's about training the community. It's about having a vision of K-12. It's a, it's really about working with Gina and the administrators and the teachers to, to pull back the purpose of high school education, which has drifted into how well are you doing on the test? And what we're hearing now is, no, high school education is how well am I doing in my adult life? And how are we going to address those things? So I, I wish I could give you a sharper number, but you know, two hours ago, I hadn't thought we would, we would be here. So I, I think when Stephanie hires, say, the world language consultant was roughly $700. Is that about right?
Yeah, the consultants that we hire, 700 is a very low number in terms of a daily rate. It, it, I would say 700 to $2,000 a day is, is.
So $45,000 would get you a fair amount of time on, on campus to, to really address and work through this and get it started right away. This is larger than curriculum.
Okay. So from a timing perspective to answer, I guess that portion, Scott, I mean, as soon as we, we get somebody identified, we would look to start them over the summer and see, you know, how far we can get from the dollar duration, but not, not waiting until the school year to put this person in place.
Yeah, yeah, Cave and their, Cave has some resources as well. And there's a, there's a consultant, Rosina Haskins from West Hartford, that's done a good amount of work in this area. So we, we could certainly, you know, I, I could reach out to some of the folks that have given me references and I'll, I'll forward them to the administration.
So Mike, you had your, and.
So, so can, maybe we should add immediate to the motion for the immediate revisions curriculum so that we, we make it very clear that we're doing it right now, this school year, not like for next year, right, for immediate revisions. And then maybe we also consider making the motion not to exceed 45,000, which gives Scott and Tom a little leeway to shop.
Negotiate, yeah, negotiate, yeah. So the original motion with Cheryl's.
Accepts, because
Yeah, Cheryl, would you accept those revisions in your motion? Sorry, not to exceed 45 and to start immediate.
That's fine. Yep, I agree.
And Mike, you were the second, so you're proposing it. So I'm assuming you're okay with that revision. Okay. Revision, okay. Juliette, did you capture the revision?
Okay, so region nine to appropriate an amount not to exceed forty five thousand for the immediate curriculum revisions related to support for diversity, inclusion and racism.
Yeah. I would just amend racism to anti-racism.
Yes.
I don't want to make it sound like we're fucking racist.
You're right.
I know, I know what it's meant, but.
No, you're right.
Okay.
We did that on the fly.
Your 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 motion is clear, what what we would want is to buy in expertise to help us. But also probably want to spend some of this money on materials or training or or uh or other folks or books or whatever, so as long as you are comfortable with. The wording encompassing that, then I think that's terrific.
That was exactly what I was gonna say, thank you.
I think that's, I think we're good with that, right, because we're not saying anything specifically about a consultant or anything like that, right?
Right, this is not being appropriated exclusively for a consultant.
Yeah.
That's particularly since I I I take you at your word as to the price point of this consultant. But nobody's gone out and and checked out the current, you know.
Right.
Pricing, and I wouldn't want to see this money appropriated for a consultant that turns out to be five thousand dollars a day.
No, that's true.
So I think there has to be some discretion and some recognition that while a consultant might be in the game plan. This should not be used exclusively for a consultant at particular thresholds.
Great, Scott.
Like to see it used in school, not, but to create resources within the school. That can be reused rather than an outsider who's coming in and providing expertise at a particularly high price point.
Scott, does that give you enough from an accounting mechanics, and we'll give you vendor and all that, it sounds like tomorrow, we'll.
Yeah, we can certainly start that work tomorrow and to to Dr. to Dr. McMoran's point, I think we'll just need to subdivide it a little bit and make some provisions for. The books of the supplies, those types of things, uh, because again, it it does come down to dollars and vendors, so we'll just, we'll give that a little thought tomorrow as we work through it.
Okay. All right, any other? Discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
Can can I just revisit real quick, um, what Tom was saying about um. Which kind of changing our values in our educational system um with this discussion, which I definitely commend. Because I I've been, people have heard me speak at meetings for, you know, since my kids were in elementary school, I've. Heard me yammer on about how much we emphasize testing too much, so. At the cur- the current state of our testing excludes the ability for our teachers to be able to be as creative as they can be. And we would like them to be and include these subjects that are so important. And we need to get less of an emphasis on those standardized tests that exist at this point. And refocus so that we can include um those subjects which are so incredibly important, um, having been a former social studies teacher. You know, here I'm preaching again, um, how social studies wasn't tested for so long, so it was, you know, your math, your science, your your English. Um, but I just want everybody on this call, you know, parents and students alike. To remember that we need to focus a little less on our standardized tests that were developed. By a broad range of people who don't necessarily um reflect where we're going right now and where we should be going. So thanks, it's my little soap opera.
All right, any other conversation on the motion? Everybody's clear on it, do we need to recap it? Since we amended it, but. All right, um, so then. Let's go ahead and vote on it then, um, for the motion for the uh not to exceed forty five thousand. Um, to support the region nine efforts, then, uh, all in favor? Uh, I, if you raise your hands, we can count as well. Sure, you can help me count. It's like unanimous.
Yep.
Everyone, yeah, all right, so it passes unanimously. All right, and then I guess the last item we had talked about was, um, you know, charges with the curriculum, having the curriculum committee. They don't think we need them any motion for that unless somebody really wants to formalize it. I think it's it's a matter of the curriculum committee needs to meet uh and start, you know, again, looking at some of the suggestions that were. Uh, provided from the community, uh, Stephanie's timeline and um the suggestions that she's got and just start looking through things and then. You know, output from the consultant. So I think that's just a matter of the committee unless somebody wants to formalize. Uh, any any charge or anything for the committee, otherwise they just need to meet and go about their business with these other inputs, this would be my perspective.
I think that we should get the curriculum committee together to kick off the timeline that that Dr. Pearson Ugo laid out, I still think that's a good timeline, it doesn't. You can't do things now as you've taken a bold step and and work on them, but you also want to be deliberative in your. Um, in your overall uh work in curriculum and. So that wouldn't, that'd be fine, I think you don't have to do it tomorrow, but certainly by sometime in July.
All right, so I I'll look to, since we know that is is Cheryl noted, that committee hasn't met yet since we've reformed the board, so we don't have a, I don't think we have a formal sitting chair yet, so. Um, so as board chair, I'll look to get it scheduled with the members of that committee and the first item, you know, we'll get the chair set up and then.
Stephanie, can can Stephanie send us that in in writing just so we can see actually what it is?
Oh, the timeline, the proposed timeline, Stephanie can, is that something you can send to the board members, so we can, I was trying to jot notes, but yeah, I didn't get all.
Happy to do that, yeah, and you'll you'll see that the timeline does include bringing in a consultant, I think the consultant will be tremendously helpful, so I so appreciate the uh. The support to do that.
Okay, right, so I'll I'll take the action items chair to uh convene the curriculum committee um as soon as we can, so I'll reach out to the board members that are on that committee. And then, as I mentioned, they can uh elect a chair and and, you know, start looking at the items. Discuss. All right, any other discussion, comments, thoughts on on that? Item on item C. As we'll move on, seeing how it's ten thirty.
On behalf of the administrators, thank you, board, for giving us resources, thank you.
Thank you, all right, so let's move to item D, start of school year preparations and potential purchases. And Stephanie, sorry for having you start this at uh ten thirty, but uh also an important topic that we'll have some discussion. Um, so do you, oh, you want me to go ahead and and share out?
Would you, that would, that would be great.
Yeah.
I have a copy and I can, I can narrate as you go.
So give me one second. Share that. All right, can everybody see that?
All right, so I'd like to spend a few minutes going through the models for reopening and all of the the many components that are a part of this work. So to begin, there are three main options for us when we consider how to reopen. We are planning to reopen on August twenty sixth. We do not know, as of today, June twenty third, whether that will be an all-in model, option one. An all-out model, option two. Or a hybrid model, option three. So you can see in each column, I included the focus areas for the first two options. So these are the things that we're going to need to spa- pay special attention to if we are all in, health and safety, we've talked about. Uh, protocols that will need to be in place in terms of how students enter the building to avoid congregating. Any kind of health screening that will need to be in place, obviously, many enhanced cleaning practices. As well as curriculum revisions that need to take into account what occurred during distance learning. And finally, the need for additional counseling support. And time for social emotional learning, we want our students to be able to reconnect with one another and then also to form new communities. Option two is all out, that would be if we continue in distance learning. If that is the case, then one of the major focus areas will be to create um clear expectations. For schedule and time for students and staff. That uh, that's evident from the review of the survey. Responses and then also through the many focus groups that I facilitated. Both i- in terms of the requests from parents and also from our teachers and para educators. We also want to make additional technology training available to our parents. Who were asked to step in as the role of as teacher or support teacher in your homes. And then the last two remain in place as focus areas, whether we're in or out, and that is the. The curriculum revisions that will need to occur and then also the additional um. Uh, availability of counseling support and time for teachers to connect with students in new communities, which of course will. Will be uh an added challenge if we are all out. Option three is the hybrid and so much of the hybrid is going to be informed. By the guidelines that we receive, and I would say the most critical guideline has to do with the need for um distancing. So it could be that we uh come back on rotating days and that might be two days in, three days out, or some other type of schedule. It could also mean, as we've seen, uh, there were some conversations earlier at the state level about possible. Uh, hybrid plans that might bring our elementary school students in, but spreads those students across buildings to allow for additional distance. And then uh middle school and high school might be on some type of a of a distance learning schedule. Now, I can tell you that that option has obvious challenges. We would need to prepare our facilities to support students uh of a different age level than would typically attend. Uh, and because we are three different districts, we would need to um uh. Create procedures for for building sharing that could be across district, but that's that's not necessary. The next one is a staggered schedule, you might have heard of of the recommendation to bring students in for half days, an AM session and a PM session. And continue distance learning in addition to that. Um, that would require us to add additional bus runs. So while it's not impossible, there are significant uh financial considerations that would need to be taken into account. And finally, and this is, this could even be sort of an add-on option. Many people have said in in warmer weather, couldn't we consider using more outdoor areas? For instruction and that is certainly possible if the weather weather allows us to do so. And then also the use of non-classroom indoor spaces such as the cafeteria. Um, or the gymnasium and all of that is possible and we just need to consider that. If the main teacher is in one space with one group of students. It's a different staff member who would be with the other students in the other space, because obviously we can't run all of the classes in. Um, a a space that's the size of the cafeteria, so then there are staffing considerations, certification considerations. And and then just the quality of the program, but those are the three major options. We are hopeful that we will get guidance from the state uh as early as the end of next week. And once we have that guidance, then we can really move into the next step. Can we see the next slide? These are the categories, and I know that this is um a busy slide, there's a lot of information here. What I want to share is basically the idea that. For the core categories of. Health and safety, facilities, food services, scheduling, transportation and academics and athletics. There are then connected um. Sort of next level categories. These are just the first two levels. I could build this slide out to include three circles, four circles, et cetera, and I'll just provide. One example, if you take a look at facilities and then follow facilities to nursing. Under nursing, we need to consider uh possibly a required isolation room. And then the location of that room, so that if students needed to be placed in that isolation room. Are they traveling uh through the entire school to get there? And how do we organize, for instance, the um health screenings? That might occur at different spots as students are entering the school building and then how the student moves to. The nurse's area or to an isolation room and then the parent pickup piece, so. With each one of these circles, there are many, many subcategories. Okay, next slide. There are a number of different different decision points, and right now, of course, we're still in the the first column prior to state decision. But the main idea is here is that for each one of the major categories, we have the basic concept, so the concept. Is health or safety or transportation. From the concept, we move into exploration and research, what are all of the different things that we need to consider, so for example. Uh, for food service, we heard from Chartwells that there are basically, um, there are six different options that we might pursue in terms of how to provide. Food service to our students, we can quickly eliminate a a couple of them, so the, in the most extreme, it would be delivering. Meals to students' homes, so obviously that's not something we're going to pursue. So that's the exploration and research stage, once we can narrow it down. And in many cases, that comes after we have state guidance, we can get to the point where we're actually planning the way it will look. In each building for each one of the concepts. When we have the state decision regarding reopening, we can take. That research and planning and then actually draft. Um, we, I'm sorry, we can take the exploration and research and then move to draft the plan. Which then at the point that we would be ready to communicate with parents and staff. We would be um sharing information, gathering more feedback and input. So that then we are ready to implement and then finally analyze and evaluate. Now you'll notice that some, that if for some areas we can implement at a much earlier point, and that's mostly, that mostly has to do with health and safety protocols. We know that we have staff members that have returned to work, we're working in offices, people have needed to come into the building, so. Part of our planning is already being implemented. Although most of the work that of course has to do with reopening the schools to students and all staff um. Will not be implemented until much later on. Next slide. These are the stages and this is the current status as of today. You can see each one of the concept areas. We've moved into exploration and research for all the areas, I would say transportation was the last one to. Receive the the check mark in the exploration and research box, although uh Mr. Rice and I were pleased to hear. From first student that we are one of the first districts to contact them. And request a very regular meeting to discuss how they are going to prepare, how they're going to. Look at their routing, what their ridership was prior to COVID. Um, what we've learned in terms of parents that might consider opting out of transportation next year. And how we can move forward accordingly, also having to do with a possible need for monitors and how they will provide. Uh, a safe environment on the bus. Next slide. For health and safety, we're probably the the furthest along, that would include the personal protective devices. Um, and then all of the nursing supplies, as you know, we have ordered masks and shields, we're looking at a thirty day supply, that's the initial order. Once we are um hopefully back in session, we'll have a better better sense of our actual usage and then we can create a replenishment schedule accordingly. In that health and safety category, we are also looking at different cleaning protocols for our buildings and we have already purchased. The additional machines for our custodial staff to use to clean uh the building using a a. The additional machines for our custodial staff to use to clean the building using a different different procedure. And then sort of on a lower level, but each one of the buildings would typically orders soap. Sanitizer towels. Obviously, they will be ordering a much. A much larger supply of those materials. Next slide. Facilities, and you can see all of the different things that we're considering in this area. Entry and exit, common spaces, classrooms, fields. If we are allowed to have visitors, what the protocols will be as people enter the building. Cleaning and then nursing and the possible need to create an isolation room. I want to highlight also the. The reason on this slide that I included the first day of school for staff. Is the fact that we have just one day with our Region Nine teachers before the students come back. It is likely that just about that entire day will be filled with needed training. In the safety procedures that we will have in place. Next slide. Food services, as I said, we're looking at a number of different options for food services at Barlow in particular. The supervision concern is probably less significant, but we will need to consider. Additional cleaning that will be needed. So if students are not all eating in the cafeteria because of distancing requirements and we. Allow them to eat their lunches in in different spaces. One, we have to provide adequate time and and adjust the lunch schedule within the sort of mandated window that we have. But then we would also need to be sure that we can clean the areas where they're eating as well. Next slide. Transportation. Transportation is is frankly a very large area of our work. We do not know yet whether we might need to put monitors on our buses, and of course, that's not something that we budgeted for. If we run a hybrid type of schedule, then the bus company will need to. Radically adjust their routes. To provide the pickup for students on on different schedules. And then finally, in terms of the ridership in our initial conversation with first student, we learned that. A bus that would typically hold 72 students with distancing requirements in place. We would we would move from 72 students about on a bus to approximately 11 students on a bus. Now, the only difference here would be if if more than one family member is on the same bus, then of course those those students could sit in the same seat. But it wouldn't be more many more than 11 per bus. So obviously, this is a large consideration for us. Next slide. The scheduling, the scheduling research has begun, and again, this is something that we're looking at. All the different options, but then we'll be able to advance our work once we know what the parameters are from the state. There's also a lot of talk, and frankly, many parents have asked whether they will have the ability to. Opt into distance learning if they do not feel comfortable sending their child to school. So that's something else that I'm just putting out there that that people are certainly asking about. I would say that in terms of scheduling, there's a need for additional professional learning. And training. So the training would be more the discrete set of skills that would help someone learn a new software program. Whereas professional learning is is much more important in terms of the ongoing work with colleagues. And finally. Academics and athletics. Much of this work has already started in terms of planning for curriculum revisions. I've asked our content leaders, our department chairs. And the director of counseling to be thinking about the needs of students. As they either return into a brick and mortar setting or continue in distance learning. So they are looking at the resources and materials that students might. Bring home with them if we know that we have to move from brick and mortar into distance learning. And what would be useful for teachers to have at home, and in some cases. Orders have been placed for additional materials, and in other cases, it's a matter of. Creating notes within the different content areas, units of study to say. These are the key tech resources. These are the materials that students would need to bring home, etc. One of the great unknowns is. Are the exact student performance. We have not been able to assess them using traditional means during distance learning. So when we return to school, our first priority is going to be to help the students feel whole again. And help them reconnect and 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 sort of take care of their social, emotional needs. But we will also be conducting many assessments so that we can, we have a better diagnostic sense of our students' need. That will then trigger the need for possibly additional collaborative meetings, slight curriculum revisions. Plans to support students. Based on their current level of performance, and much of that we simply won't know until the students return to school. So a part of this will need to. Include the board's consideration of our calendar for next year. And the need for very regular. If we are in session, it would be early dismissal time, and if we're in distance learning at Barlow, I know in particular. The staff tends to prefer the delayed start time as as a way to allow. Teachers a couple of hours on a very regular basis to work with one another to continue their professional learning. So that they can make the the revisions that are needed and also. Learn to use new tech resources in a way that meets the needs of our students. I believe that is the last slide, so I am happy to take questions at this point. We can't hear you, Tom.
Can you hear it? Oh, yeah.
Ah, sorry. I hit that extra button. Open up for questions for board members. And thank you, Stephanie, for walking us through that.
Do I always have to go first?
First one with your hand up.
Okay, so I have. Quite a few questions. Number one. We we don't yet have the plan for academics, facilities, or food service, right? According to the charts, it's we're we're not to that step yet where we have the plan.
We don't have the parameters from the state yet that will allow us to advance the plan, but we know the options.
Okay, so if we know the options, I think one of our. One of our priorities is to figure out what it is that we need. So that we can purchase it. Without, you know, again, and so some of my examples would be. I saw somewhere electric hand dryers in the bathrooms. Do we need electric hand dryers in the bathrooms? I think that's unrealistic at this point to try and put them in. However, is there a way to put paper towel dispensers that automatically dispense the paper towels? Whether they're battery powered or whether they're, you know, but some way to to to. And have we thought about how many actual bathrooms are necessary, where they're going to be? So that we have a number so that we know what it's going to cost to make those revisions.
Yeah, so I can take that question.
Okay.
Sorry.
Going to say there's lots of things like that. So what I'm what I'm looking for, and I don't want to. Burden you with, you know, well, what about cleaning products and do we are we order because? Cleaning products is another one of those things that they really don't go bad. And I understand where, under the typical municipal accounting procedures. You wouldn't want to buy cleaning products this year that you're going to use next year. However, we are in the midst of a pandemic. And we don't want to find ourselves where next year where we try to get the cleaning products. And because we're in the middle of a second phase or a second round. All of a sudden, we can't get the cleaning products, or we can't get the masks, or we can't. Now, I'm not suggesting, I think there's a balancing act there. You don't want to have masks for. Three years or or, you know, for the entire school year, but you want to have enough masks that. If something happens and they become difficult to get, you have enough on hand to be able to. Get through that period until you're able to get more. And the same thing, I guess, you know, I would say as far as the cleaning products. The the misting machines we have for the for the school. Have we thought about if we do bus runs? Do we need a misting machine that goes on the bus in between rounds after they drop the students? Has there been thought to that, or is that just unrealistic?
So Mike, Mike, can we have maybe Scott say what's been purchased so far?
Yeah, well, I was just going to give him the things and then just let him run with it, you know, the barriers, plexiglass on on countertops. All these other things, I'm sure you've thought of them, and so I'm just wondering. Have we thought of them to the degree that we start to know a number or what? You know, so so that we can act on it.
True.
So sorry to go on. I just wanted to, I don't want to keep.
Yeah, so maybe maybe Scott, you can just, I because I know you've made some purchases, so maybe you can go through what's been purchased if there's still stuff on your list that. You know, we're contemplating, and then we can maybe help make a decision or fund that.
Sure. And I think I would preface it by taking what Stephanie reviewed. Down just one level, and and that is really the level to which you were describing, Mike. Each one of those subject areas. Results in multiple scenarios that are possible. Each of those scenarios result. In multiple implications of things that you may need to order or alter or plan for, etc., etc. So. This has very much been a a discussion where we are balancing. Prudence, I would say, with what is likely versus what may be. We've had conversations about some very disruptive, very expensive things. That may be required. They may not be required. Clearly, we're not going to proceed with those. We've had conversations about things that are like cleaning supplies, very straightforward, of course. They don't go bad. We certainly should proceed with them. And in fact, we have, and certainly would welcome Walter's comments as I as after I go through this. In particular areas, we have initiated. Ordering already. PPE is a good example of one. We initiated that actually. I'm just looking at my notes. We initiated that in the about a month ago, actually. For the first wave of that, and we are in the process of initiating a second wave of it. That's an area where, in fact, the state has stepped in to provide some assistance. Which is good news. The bad news is that we can't place an order today in order to do it, but we are anticipating the ability to have. Single source bulk purchasing facilitated essentially through state auspices. Which should actually, I presume, assist with the supply issue. These areas are supply issues already. They were supply issues a month ago. I think they'll continue to be supply issues across across the state, across the country. But by the state assisting with the acquisition of of PPE types of things. I'm presuming that they would in fact be working on a on a bulk level. With a serious national provider who would be able to 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 handle our requirements. We have proceeded in. Certain areas to acquire. Electrostatic sprayers. That actually has been initiated already for all buildings. Those were a decision that we made because they do have lasting value. They're a good, they're a good idea now. They were a good idea yesterday, and irrespective of what happens tomorrow, they're a good idea tomorrow. For some other areas. We have teed up a few things that we think make sense, and this is particularly as we think about the distance learning area. And improving overall. Operation of the buildings and one that we actually just took action on today. Is an expansion to the power school system to enable. Remote completion of the annual registration process. Which occurs at the beginning of school. We would now be able to have that be performed remotely. That's a good idea, independent of of anything as well, but it takes on heightened need as it would clearly reduce. Traffic. To the schools in that very heavy initiation at the beginning of school time. So we actually decided to proceed with that today. Because we think that that makes sense independently as well. There are two other areas with technology. That would expand and improve on existing technology that we have, but will provide. A more safe, more secure environment for online instruction than we have had. We would recommend proceeding with those, and that's on a list for tonight. And then lastly, Walter's done quite a bit of work in regards to. The Barlow building with some recommendations in a number of areas for incremental purchases, and it includes paper plow, sorry, paper towel dispensers. Flushometers, which is an automatic toilet flushing capability, paper supplies, the Plexiglas Plexiguard. Additional trash cans. A water station, increased cleaning supplies for disinfectants and sanitizer station. So there's there's a bit of a laundry list of things there. I I will mention that some of these things are are definite debates for us. But I would support moving forward with all of them, and I'll give you an example of the debate. We've had the conversation about the Plexiglas and guard station types of. Protection for that, and the discussion that we've had from a health and safety standpoint guided by our tri-district nurse coordinator is that. If the distancing and and. And other masking requirements persist. In the fall, as they do now, that are currently in effect for summer school. Because there are guidelines that have been released for summer school. If those persist into the fall, her particular guidance is a Plexiglas shield offers no additional health benefit. It's not to say you shouldn't do it, not to say you can't do it, or you won't do it, but it does not, from her perspective, offer any additional health benefit. That said, Walter's estimate is for $800, we would cover six stations with Plexiglas workstations. It doesn't seem like an egregious amount of money. And certainly can't hurt by the same token. But I offer that as a small example of the dozens of conversations that we've had where you. You either bottom out with, this makes sense, we should go do it, to the other extreme being, well, that's crazy, and unless we're forced to do it, we certainly wouldn't. But then there's a really, really broad range in the middle where we're making a judgment call as to how to proceed or not. That list that I just read to you is in depending upon the types of sanitizers we go with. Conventional versus automated. There's a couple of thousand dollar difference between the two, but in gross numbers, what I the list I just read to you was about $25,000 all in. For all of that, and I know Walter would be able to provide you additional detail if needed.
Does that include making the isolation room for the nurse?
No, it does not. Yeah, I mean, I don't think that there's any specific thing here, but I also don't know whether or not there's any particular. Additional costs required for doing that.
Okay.
No, it just has to have a proper ventilation.
Right, so do we have an area that we can use to make that isolation room for the nurse if needed? Because I think that's another one of those areas, like you said before, that. I don't think it's a bad thing to have a a room, you know, even when COVID is over, a kid with the flu that comes in that you can. I I don't think it's a bad thing to have a a room, you know, even when COVID is over, a kid with the flu that comes in that you can. You know, put that student in into a room that they're not exposing germs to other students and the staff that, you know, I think that's. One of those things that makes sense if you can do it and it's not crazy expensive, you know, so I just. Didn't know whether we're planning that.
So we do have a um a nurse's office, I she does have a room and I am. Sorry, I shut my camera off. She does have a an examination room, a separate room. Um that does have ventilation in her office. But I think we need more guidance from the state as far as is that, does it need to not be in the nurse's office? Does it need to be in a different area? You know, we certainly have conference rooms and and things we can use. Like we're not looking at building a separate area. So I think you're right, Mike, in in appropriating what we have.
Can I ask a question with regard to the buses? Um how did they come up with the number of 11 students on a bus? And the second part of that is. Students obviously will have to wear masks on the bus, I'm assuming.
Presumably.
Okay. And so does that change the equation at all?
Yeah, the transportation is a a very, very broad range. And social distancing requirements are going to dictate where we go with this as well as the the uh. As Stephanie mentioned, sort of the hybrid scheduling sort of a thing. If it's a some days you're in, some days you're not in with rotating types of schedules like that, it will really play havoc.
Yeah, because these are high schoolers, do we take into account? How many will drive? I mean, and many more might want to drive because of the situation. And do we have a survey in place that'll ask them so that we're not wasting? Money sending buses with two people now on them because, you know, eight of the kids that we thought were going to be on an 11 person bus are not going to be on it.
No, exactly. Um and then, by the way, that's a perpetual problem. Um we are obligated.
I've seen it. I've seen buses with like five kids on it.
So we're obligated to provide transportation and the the way that's occurred on the ground is people have the ability to opt out, but they also have the ability to opt back in. So it's it's not as if we can magically reduce our bus fleet to one third of it because only a third of students are driving. Because two weeks from now, three quarters of them may maybe uh riding the the buses. That said, for for the purposes of this conversation. It it really depends on what the distancing guidelines are going to be. We would presume in what we think is worst case that. Uh students would need to board the bus. There's an open question as to whether or not. Temperature checking needs to occur prior to them getting on the bus or after the bus or at all. Uh that's a big question mark, but it drives a big logistics question. Um there's a open question as to whether or not we would be required to have a monitor on every single bus. Um that will be material in cost. The calculation of 11 versus 72 is a 72 passenger bus has um 12 rows. Each row has two benches across the aisle from each other. So each of those benches hold arguably three students. So that's six maximum people per row by 12 rows, 72 total. Now, school bus benches are uh smaller than I remember them. And uh I could certainly see three uh elementary students on there, but uh probably only one of me. So from a high school perspective, reality, they're not getting six kids across those rows in the first place. We wouldn't get 72 high school kids onto one of those buses. We might get uh we might get 48 perhaps if we were to do two and two. So the spacing requirement says leave the first row behind the driver open for distancing from the driver. And then begin to position every uh row but staggered side by side. So student in this row, skipper row, student on the left side, skipper row, student on the right side, back, back, back. So that's one student per row for a total of 11. That's why, that's how we got to that. So we've already begun to examine things like what was our ridership prior to this hitting? So we had an understanding of what the bus loads looked like already. Uh Stephanie from her survey work already already has feedback in regards to. Uh parent preference in regards to likelihood to use transportation or not. Um we want to see is that twice the absenteeism that we typically experience? Or is that consistent with the we normally uh see absenteeism, meaning number of people riding the bus? So as some of these things crystallize, we'll have a better understanding of how they go. The cleaning protocols for um the buses would be handled by the bus company. Uh they've told us that they are actively working on that at a national level in terms of their approach. How they're doing that, what types of products, what makes sense, what what works well, what doesn't work well, what doesn't harm the interior. Uh those kinds of things. So they're working on that.
No expense though?
Unclear at this point, um certainly not.
Transportation, right? So if they clean them, we'll probably have to pay extra.
But potentially, I think there's a, there's a bit of a wild card there. And from a, I think from a contractual standpoint as to to what degree is this included versus not. They, we've also asked them to begin to start looking into multiple scenarios in terms of alternate ways to run the buses. Similarly, if the parent or student driving. Uh load materially increases on campus. What what is that likely to do to our flow? We already are typically in a jam getting self drivers and and parent drivers through while simultaneously trying to run. Uh the buses in an efficient manner to get them in, get them out and turn them around. So we do expect to probably need to reconfigure. Uh in a lot of ways, the way the transportation works. This is very much a space where we we really need to see what's really required and then build out from there.
Thank you.
So in the the 25K in supplies, um you know, I I guessing like airing on the side of ordering more sprayers. Hand sanitized, hand sanitation uh stations. You know, signage, washer hands, any of those kinds of things. Um you know, having, you said we've got one month. You know, I'm assuming we're adding a little bit more there. Um so again, if if we've got to do temperature checks on every bus. And then also for every athletic event, you know, do we? How how many additional, you know, how many thermometers do we have right now, right? That we can can use and how much more are we going to have later? Versus let's incrementally buy a little bit more now for some of those items. I just want to make sure we're not too short in the 25K and what you've purchased already in those items. And then a similar question for Stephanie for the summer uh for scheduling curriculum, any software training. You know, do is that, I'm assuming that's not in the 25K that there may be some additional that we need to look at.
That was not included in the 25K. 25K is really a a supply.
Supplies. Yeah.
So is the added uh security measure stuff, is that in there or is that a next year expense?
There's nothing in regards to added security. I'm not sure what.
I I thought you said for distance learning, there was some sort of a.
Software or something.
Yeah, sorry, I was thinking physical security. Um that was not in the 25K, that would be an incremental, um let me get the list here. So outside the 25K of supplies, I would add in. An additional. Eight thousand, eight thousand for the software uh changes that we uh talked about previously.
Relating to the both both for the scheduling and for the security software, is that just the security software?
Uh that was the expansion of the two uh securities uh software suites and um. Uh also the uh online registration through Power Score rather than in-person registration.
And then last two things for me. Number one, I spoke with the, I had a chance to speak with the director of health from the state of Pennsylvania over the weekend. And we were talking about uh thermometers, you know, and take taking. Their their temperature as they're coming in the building and or as they're getting off the bus or whatever. And I was actually advised that that is a uh a flawed way of looking at things. Because of the lengthy incubation period. You, a student could get off the bus, you, you know, their temperature is absolutely normal. And in the time that they walked from the front door to their classroom. All of a sudden, they have a temperature. So it's it's kind of a flawed way. If if a student does not feel well, then it's the first thing you do. But it's it's kind of a, you're chasing your tail if you're constantly taking everybody's temperature as they get off the bus, as they come in, you know, all that kind of stuff. Um but obviously, we have to follow what the state tells us to do and and I I get all that.
And that's it. And that's, that's, that's why we so often end up in these conversations exactly in this spot, which is. Is it a good idea? Sure, it sounds generically like a good idea. Should we go buy another 12 thermometers? No, I don't think we should. I think that we have sufficient to do what we believe that we need to do now. Um if we end up being mandated to do such a thing and we need 12 more. Well, then there's going to be a whole lot of other people in the same boat that we are. Um but I don't particularly see value in having a lot of extra things on a speculative basis. I think that we're we're much better charged to do the things that have lasting value in any case. Or that we have a very high reasonable expectation is going to be required.
Right. And and the last thing is, I think uh as soon as we can get there. We should try to figure out. How we would handle a staggered building. In other words, I've heard different models. I I've heard some school districts say A through L will go Monday and Tuesday. And then L through Z will go uh Wednesday and Thursday. And then Friday, everyone's remote, you know, distance learning. Uh I've also heard, which I think is a more effective model is. A through L would go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, everyone would do distance learning. So you could deep clean the building and then Thursday, Friday, you would do. Uh you know, L through Z, and then you could clean the building again on the weekend, which again gets into overtime and stuff. But but it's seems like a better way. But the reason I say that when, as soon as we can. Articulate these, you know, uh proposals, which, you know, we don't know where we're going. But I think it's important for parents to be able to start to plan that if they know. Their last name begins with a Z and that they can start to figure out that, you know, maybe one of their friends can. Pick up their kid or take their, you know, and I know they're high school kids, so they're all getting off the bus anyway. I I realize that, but I still think it's it's good to be able to articulate that as soon as we can to give people as much uh planning time as possible.
Right, yeah, I I think I agree. I mean, I I think as soon as we know which model and we start drilling down into the details. We'll, you know, let parents know, you know, schedule. And then as soon as we know which door the building the kid can come into, we'll let them know, right? I mean, it's it's again, you know, stuff from you saying, we've got to drill down into the areas once we know guidance. And if we don't get all the guidance, we'll have to start making some decisions on our own and make adjustments when the state comes back with guidance.
Well, then we'll know we have no guidance and we know that we can make a decision on our own. That's and that's that's perfectly fine as well. Knowing is the key. It's the not knowing that's the challenge.
Yeah, yeah, because we're likely not to get a lot of guidance until too late. And we're going to have to make some decisions that'll work for us. Uh and Stephanie, I I didn't hear, were there other items that you needed? Um because you had mentioned some, you know, some training. Um you know, people working over the summer, still working on scheduling and other curriculum things. I I haven't heard, is there an an additional number here that we need for any of the curriculum scheduling, additional planning?
Uh we have adequate money for the work that's already been scheduled for June. It was my understanding that we couldn't take unspent money for this year. In order to do curriculum work in July and August. So if that's not the case, I can, I can tell you that. In order for me to bring in 20 teachers for one day, it's uh $7,200. That would certainly be helpful, um but I was not looking at that at all. Because, you know, as of July 1, we'll have, we'll have uh new operating budget monies to work with. And I wasn't considering applying unspent funds because I didn't think it was possible.
Yeah, I I would think the other way is if there was some meeting that we would start them before the end of the month.
And that is happening. So so I just want to clarify that that is indeed happening.
Yeah. Yeah, so yeah, anything in starting July 1 would be for next year's budget. But yeah, if you've got money to cover you through the end of this month. Then we we should be good there, I would think.
Yeah. Another thing we may want to consider, Todd, is. It it seems like, because I've heard it twice now, that the uh really one day for the staff. Is really going to be challenging. And so I'm wondering whether we can do something, you know, we can approach the bargaining unit and have a discussion. As to whether we can get an extra day. That maybe we utilize somewhere farther down uh in the calendar to kind of. Bring it to the start of the school year so that it might be uh more useful there. And I know it's still taking it away from somewhere else, but I'm I'm just wondering whether. That should, that discussion should take place if if it would in fact be helpful.
I I would think so. I'd leave that to to Stephanie and Tom and Gina for having people in, you know, two days. Their day and a half in in advance.
It it would be helpful. You only have 183 days in this contract and you have to provide the intercessional day. And you already have one day before, so you.
Yeah.
There's one day that you could move forward. Or uh if the state eases its 180 day requirements, you could leave the kids home for another day. Uh to give teachers more time. And I think that comes back to, you know, the much anticipated um guidance from Hartford.
I'm assuming, Stephanie, that's on your list of things that you're looking at is start of school and those kind of things for the.
It is, you know, it is. And it would be tremendously useful to have even one more day with our Barlow teachers before the school year begins. But I would say having regular time after the school year begins will also be important. Because as I explained, we need to get the students back in school. Have them settle in a little bit, try and care for them and and their many needs and then assess them. So once we have that assessment information, we're going to be able to do more work. So that's why I think the regular time will also be useful. And those aren't full days. I mean, early dismissal days, so it's not altering the calendar, but certainly it it does inconvenience families.
So I think, yeah, let's keep that on the table and, you know, talk through those things of all over the summer. We need to approach the bargaining units for that. We can, we can do that definitely.
Do we have an all in number? Are we looking for?
Yeah, well, to my tally right now, I've got 25K for supplies and 8K for basically software for the. Security and uh online registration, so 33K.
I was looking at the clock. What was your number? I'm sorry.
I I I had 33 and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, I had 25K for supplies and 8K for software, online registration, security, software, so 33K.
Yes.
So I'd be happy to make a motion. To direct the. Finance director to allocate $33,000. Of the unexpended. Uh 2019, 2020 budget. To fund uh. Help me with the items. Two software packages, the.
I would say.
Registration.
Items related to the COVID 19, I I don't know. But however you want to, we know the the specifics and I think we've made them clear in the public meeting, but I don't want to. And I think we've made them clear in the public meeting, but I don't want to hand tie you with.
Yeah, I would, I think I would say, um, building supplies and software, um. Uh, improvements related to Covid nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Went at a hand up, but you're muted, so you couldn't get.
Count if you're muted.
Whatever.
So that was Mike and Cheryl. So let me just, so allocate, um. Thirty-three K of unexpended twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget to fund. Um, building supplies and software related to Covid nineteen, something to that effect.
Yes.
Julie, nodding her head, the official. You're faster at getting the motions down than I am. Alright, so, uh, and then that was motion by Mike, second by Cheryl. Alright, so, um, any further discussion? At the late hour, everybody's good with that. Alright, um, so then let's go ahead. I'm sorry, uh, we're voting. Merrily's got her hand up already, or is that a question?
Take attendance here, I'm sorry.
Alright, so all in favor.
Yeah.
As red, alright, looks unanimous.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good. Okay. Alright. Any other discussion then for start of school year? Preparation and potential purchases, or otherwise we'll move on to the next item. Alright, then moving on, um, so this last one, hopefully this will be fairly quick with the two items that we had. Um, finalize the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty unexpended funds for the fiscal year. Um, so. Scott, I believe at the beginning, we, in your administrative report, we had an extra two hundred thousand of unspent.
Yeah.
Um, and it looks like we've reduced that by thirty-three and forty-five, so.
By seventy-eight.
By seventy-eight.
Does it, Todd, does it make sense to wait until July?
I, I guess it's a.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. I was just gonna.
No, I was just saying, it's a question for Scott, like if he needs to do accounting.
Well, we don't know what's happening with the consultant and some of the things are going to be floating. I don't know whether you, you need a, I mean, sometimes we direct you to give so much here and so much there, but. It seems like we've already done that and we're just looking for a final number to say X goes to Reading and X goes to Easton. I, I don't know if it's helpful to give you some time rather than.
But, yeah, I won't physically have the number until the September meeting at the earliest, I would say.
But I, I guess for accounting entries for now to close out the fiscal year. Um, you know, we've asked to reduce it seventy-eight. Um, so whatever you end up with at the end of the year. Um, you know, I think we've allocated things already previously, right, for pension and capital and so forth. So we're asking. You know, allocate another seventy-eight for these items.
Right.
Um, and I think you have, I think, I guess the question is, do you have enough direction and, and flexibility that you can do what you need to do with the accounting? System for the end of the year.
Yeah.
Based on what we've got in front of you right now.
Yeah, the unexpended funds is the result of the decisions that are made and we've made the decisions. And, uh, now what we do is we work through the actual expenditures. And things will vary a little bit up, a little bit down as things come through and close out when we get to the back end of, of it.
Okay, yeah. So as the June bills come through and you pay those, et cetera. So you have everything you need from us then.
I do.
On this item, so then we can go ahead and close it then. Okay. Any other question or discussion around that? Otherwise, we'll, we'll close it out. That I was just primarily to make sure Scott had the direction that he. Needed from us to do his thing on the accounting system, so. So we'll have, again, for the record, we've got another seventy-eight thousand forty-five for the consultant thirty-three. Uh, for the over nineteen supplies and software. Um, that we've allocated for the unexpended, just to recap that. Okay. Alright, so that will close out the item seven, uh, discussion, possible actions. Um, so now we're back to public comment. Um, and we still have. Uh, quite a few members of the public. I got forty participants on quite a few members of the public that. Still hanging in there through the entire meeting, so we appreciate that. So same, uh, pro call will apply. Uh, for the public comment, if you can, um, raise your hand or wave in your window there. Um, give your name, address, um, and we'll limit it to two minutes. Um, to give people time to talk and to also try to wrap up the meeting before midnight. Um, so Sheriff, if you don't mind helping me look for folks and we'll identify you and unmute you to go ahead and talk, so.
Uh, Heather Whaley, there's four comment, four, four hands up.
Okay, so Heather. Yeah, you can unmute.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Heather, go ahead.
Um, first of all, thank you guys for the, uh, really thoughtful discussion. Um, the first thing that I want to say is that. I know it's uncomfortable when people point out our insufficiencies and when it comes to issues like race. The result can feel like we're all just being called racist for participating in systems that were put in place well before we got to where we are now. But, uh, education and history are told from the perspective of those who write it. And you can't correct a deficit without first naming it. As a member of the Easton and Reading Curriculum Committee, I was happy to hear the commitment to work concurrently for the immediate future through that committee. And toward future and sustainable goals that are district-wide through the task force. To the members of the High School Curriculum Committee, there are highly regarded institutions and organizations that have already developed. Curricula available to schools for free. The Pulitzer Foundation created a K through twelve curriculum for their sixteen nineteen project. The Smithsonian has a K through twelve curricula on all subjects of cultural diversity, history and, uh, cultural appreciation. Um, hopefully. With more people paying attention and more hands on deck, as it were, we can utilize these resources without a year-long revise and review process. Um, I appreciate you putting funding into this. And just want to let you know that there are nonprofits in Connecticut who specifically do this work in schools. Radical Advocates for Cross-Cultural Education in Waterbury is one group you might want to talk to. Um, you can reach out to me. I can. Repeat that later if you want. Um, and lastly. I want to say to the young community advocates and organizers who spoke earlier, keep it up. Thank you. Uh, you've made a difference and your goals are ambitious and worth fighting for. And these changes never come without a fight. Uh, even if the ER nine school system neglected to provide a curriculum of diversity. And diverse, diverse staff and student body. And a community that unquestionably valued cultural consciousness, it did provide us with alumni that make me feel. Feel really good about the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, um, Scott Charmway had a question earlier, but didn't get his hand up in time. I'm hoping that he still wants to talk, but I don't see his hand up. I don't know if he could unmute him, hold on.
Alright, I think you're unmuted, Scott. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, yes, I'm, uh, Scott Charmway, seventy-five, Northwood Drive in Easton. Uh, I have a daughter in ninth grade. Uh, thanks for hearing me out. I'll try to keep my comments brief. I also can shorten them up a bit because I heard the whole presentation on, on the preparations for the coming year. Um. I, I think, um. Where my daughter was, uh, was really hit this year, I think was the, uh. Now they come in. Um, was where they, um, the lack of structure. Um. Just apart from the, uh, the educational dynamic, I think, I'm not an expert, but seemed to really hurt her development, the. Being forced to get up and. Log in and then interact with the teacher and the rest of the students and then go on to the next period. Uh, and I feel like, um. A lot more could have been done in that regard, at least by the end of the year. Um, uh, as far as just having kids, uh. Especially the high schoolers attend school remotely, not necessarily by email. Or, um, you know, by looking at Google Docs, but by attending school remotely by video. I think just being able to do that, uh, would have given them more of the high school experience, provided the structure and, and the, uh. Uh, the social development they really need. Uh, and, uh, I saw, I heard all the presentations about all the preparations. Uh, for the coming school year and a lot of people are working hard. It's appreciated. Um, I would ask that, you know, because we don't know a lot about what's coming. Uh, if at the very least, we can have a contingency plan where at the base, at the basis. We can have kids attend school remotely by video, go through the whole school day by video. Um, I, it, it's a complaint I've heard from a lot of parents, that lack of structure. Uh, and that lack of interaction. Uh. Uh, and, um, you know, I, I, it seems to me something that, that we can do. Either with the equipment that we have on hand, or if certain capital improvements need to be made, like, you know. Certain kids need Chromebooks or. Um, you know, the school needs more bandwidth. I know in Easton, uh, we have the Easton Learning Foundation. Um, and this is why they're there for those types of capital improvements. I know they're looking to spend money. So the, at least the, the financial support on the Easton side is there. I'm sure Reading has a, a, a similar organization. Uh, and I would really like to see at least a contingency plan that if the kids aren't going to be in school. Or if they can only be in school on a split shift on certain days, that the days are not in school, they still have to go to school. Uh, and, uh, I think that would make up a lot of the. Shortfalls that we saw in the, in the spring, many of which couldn't be avoided. But I think this one could have been, quite honestly.
Uh, okay, great. Thank, thank you. If you can wrap up. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you.
Julian, Camille.
Hi, guys.
Alright, go ahead.
Hello? Well, so we're in Easton, Julianne, um, just wanted to comment on the, a couple of different things mentioned and not mentioned. Um, superintendent hiring. We really want to see, um. A superintendent that is addressing these issues of diversity and that is specifically asked about their experience with it. Um, in the hiring process, since, you know, we haven't nailed down a candidate that we want to. Hire yet, so it would be great to just have somebody with experience in this. And we've mentioned within our group, um. Alumni, thinking of looking outside of, you know, whatever current faculty is actually in the school system and being open to maybe. Bring in somebody from outside the school system currently. Um, and then also, I think that, um, there. Is definitely a lack of. Uh, there was a lack of recognition for. S- uh, students and teachers actually needing that like anti-racism, anti-bias training in order to talk about these things in an effective way. Um, we can't have students laughing at racial slurs when they're having these conversations. We can't have. Teachers unable to talk about these things and not having the language to do that. So we're really. In need of especially teacher training before any of these curriculum. Changes go into effect so that they know how to talk about these things, because there have been multiple experiences. In the comments on, um, our petition. Demonstrating areas where teachers have really said the wrong thing in, in regards to race. Um, and so. They're actually going to be the leaders to teach students also how to talk about this. Um, this is detailed in our curriculum guide and there's organizations in the curriculum guide that, um. Offer this training. Um, and then also for students, students need to know how to talk about race. They don't know how to intervene with their friends. Um, when their friends are talking about race and use a racial slur against them, they don't know what to say. This is detailed in our petition comments. Um, so a bystander intervention training program for them would be great. I've seen this with sexual assault at my college. Um, but I think it could go and move into a model that's anti-hate speech and anti-racism training. Um, and then also an anonymous bias reporting system would be great on both ends for students and teachers. So that, um, students are able to report if they're feeling language against them or actions against them that are hateful. And they're also able to report on teachers if there was an incident in the classroom. So those are a couple of things that we wanted to bring up.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Elizabeth, yep. Alright, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Um, again, my name is Elizabeth Hayman and I live in Reading on Firehill Road. Um, I've appreciated that a measure has been passed to allocate money to a consultant and other resources for curricular change. But I was honestly disappointed to hear some board members and administrators. Um, essentially push many of these curricular issues to a year from now. I understand that changing the curriculum takes time and it takes hard work from teachers. But there are changes that can and should be changed in the long, in the short term. A group of alumni has already created a thirty-page document with specific changes and curricular goals based on Barlow's existing curriculum. And many other nonprofits already have published guides as previously mentioned. Does it really take an entire year to ask wellness teachers to discuss implicit bias? Does it really require an entire year to ask incoming ninth graders to read a single book about racism? Does it really require an entire year to ask US history teachers to dedicate some degree of time to the legacy of slavery through redlining and policing? Even these small changes can make a difference in students' perspectives. If we delay this progress and fail to make short-term changes, that's another grade of students that we've failed. That's another grade of students like me and other alumni at Barlow who have not been given the knowledge and perspective that's needed in the real world about race. I ask the board remain transparent in their efforts to change the curriculum and update the community on the specific changes that are being made. I also ask that the board ensure that the new superintendent is experienced in dealing with curricular changes, especially those related to race and diversity. Candidates for the superintendent should also be asked questions about their understanding of and experiences with diversity and inclusion. This is an issue that can't be put off and it can't be dealt with quietly and slowly. Reading and Easton students deserve better than incremental changes a full year from now. Every year that passes without change is another year that we've failed our students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Blad Graziano.
Go ahead.
Hi, um, I'm Blad Graziano from Reading, Deacon Abbott Road. Um, I know that earlier there was a lot of talking about how you need money and time and resources to make these curricular changes. But I just wanted to say that there are a lot of short-term changes that you can make without needing time or money. There are. Like thousands of online resources. I've found many PDFs of free books about anti-racism that students can access online. There's webinars, TED Talks, tons of things by people of color, especially black people, especially black women. That were made to educate people and they're available for free. So you don't need a whole year and you don't need. Thousands of dollars of money to implement small changes or just to show a couple new videos. To history classes or advisory classes at the beginning of each year. There's a lot of short-term things that can be done. For free online with the resources that we already have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Jennifer Stites.
Yeah.
Right, go ahead, Jennifer.
So let me, um, okay.
No, hello.
There you go. Alright, go ahead, Jennifer. Sorry, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Um, no worries. Jennifer Stites, Easton, um, on Beers Road, um, three comments. Um, first, I will say thank you. I know you guys are working hard on a variety of crazy issues. I had a senior that graduated. Appreciate the work that went into the graduation. Second, um, my comments are actually going to be on a completely different topic than the diversity, cultural issues that have been brought up. But I want to compliment the students and alumni that just spoke and wholeheartedly agree that. Faster actions needed. I do have a younger student in the, in the high school right now who's passionate about this topic and is looking for ways. Um, to see meaningful change and I hope that we don't lose the opportunity to do it. However, I'd like to go back to a topic that was way in the beginning of the night, but got kind of pushed over quickly. Um, I have to say, I'm also concerned with another delay and that is, um, of the capital improvement project. Um, I'm not talking about the basketball floor as much as I would love a new basketball floor, but. Given everything we just spoke about with Covid safety, health, returning students back, expecting them to leave, et cetera. I'm, I'm struggling to understand why we would put, um, our HVAC and air quality systems out a year right now when. One of the greatest things, and I, I unfortunately have this in my own job, that. We're required to do with bringing people back indoors is to be able to certify that. The air quality is strong. We know that bringing them indoors increases risk and one of the ways to mitigate it is to make sure that. Circulation, purification, right temperature, all. And one of the ways to mitigate it is to make sure that circulation, purification, right temperature, all of that matters. So to me, if it's already been funded and it's a matter of finding the time to run the RFPs so that the next time these students are out, we're going to have been out for six months right now, and we didn't do it while they're out. We're, we're saying that it's optimal to do it while they're out, or maybe even necessary in some cases, depending on the portion of the project. I'd respectfully ask that the committee take that into consideration and go back and say, you know, if Scott is truly unable to take it, and that's nothing against you, Scott, it sounds like you are very overworked. Maybe somebody else could take a look at running an RFP so that it, at a minimum, we have a vendor selected pricing, and the next time we're out for a month or two months or whatever it is, we can take advantage, because I'm certainly nervous about putting them back where there's so much common space right now that's substandard even without COVID. So I would respectfully ask that. And I know there's three other parents who didn't make it quite this long tonight that had the same insight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. All right, it looks like.
One more, Todd, Jasmine, Jenna, let me, let me unmute.
All right, Jasmine, go ahead. You're unmuted.
Hi, so we, we actually have two of us here. Is it all right if each of us takes a turn speaking?
Sure, each can have two minutes, yeah.
So my name's Mia Disipio. I'm from Easton. I live on Sunview Drive. And I just wanted to reemphasize in regards to the documents provided by students and alumni of Barlow School that we are not asking the ER nine school district to implement only racist action points and you're asking the ER nine school district to decolonize school climate and school curricula. You'll find that term and the term anti-colonialist within the letter and the other documents that students and alumni have written and sent to you. And this is because we can't be anti-racist without also being anti-colonialist, so the other point that we would like to make is that decolonization is intersectional and allows us to provide an education that challenges systems of power. So while the documents that students have provided focus more specifically on an anti-racist initiatives, we can't enact meaningful change without actively and consistently acknowledging how various power systems intersect. Though we need to take an intersectional approach if we wish to combat racism and provide equitable resources, representation and treatment of students, faculty, staff, and community members. And that requires us to examine and dismantle power structures that disadvantage various communities on things such as race, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, whether that's physical, emotional, or intellectual, nationality, age, income, religion, language, and so on.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Jasmine here, Algonquin, Lane. I was sorry, Jasmine, Jen, last name. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about the outside consultant for a curricula. I don't think that's enough, and whoever you do hire must understand that staff must examine themselves first. Christine Sleder is an education activist who focuses on multicultural education and anti-racism. She conducted a study that found out that white teachers wanting to include knowledge about diverse groups did so in a Eurocentric viewpoint. It is not enough to ask educators to examine their beliefs about black and brownness. Rather, white staff must shape an authentic white identity because embracing the negative aspects of whiteness does not suffice as a cultural identity. White educators cannot simply be taught that they and their ancestors engaged and benefited from the oppression rather to fully comprehend white culture, they must understand and examine the plethora of ethnic reps. This prevents the guilt and instead engages white teachers in a productive way. And white educators need to examine their own identities so they can bridge the gap between their students and colleagues. And the, the best outside consultant will be able to do this. And so in that fifty-page guide that alumni did come up with, there are a couple listed for professional development, including innovations and equity and systemic change, courageous conversations, and Center for Racial Justice in Education. So I suggest that you do move them out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Right. Any other public comments? Now, wishing to speak, raise your hand or wave. I don't see anyone else. All right. I think that's it. All right, so we'll move into the next item. Board member comment. So I'll just quickly go down the list, Cheryl.
Just wanted to say thank you for all the public commenters, especially the Barlow grads. Great job, Barlow grads. You've done your education proud, and we hope to see, I hope to hear from more of you, to hear from you again. One comment with regard to Jen Stites, just wanted to respond to that. To the extent that the, the FFC can consider timing, or, you know, there's, you know, I know we talked about this, but I just, I did want to emphasize that, that you know, that, that individual did make a good comment. So again, happy to support the FFC if, in evaluating what we can do sooner than later.
All right, Julianne.
And I just wanted to thank everyone for their comments this evening, and really it's very nice to see lots of students and alumni as the voice of change. And that we're going forward into some new territory here for both the distance learning and for our diversity education. And hopefully, we will come out stronger and better than before.
Great, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, again, just to reinforce the appreciation of the community, especially our former Barlow students for all their thoughtfulness and their hard work, you know, to create greater awareness and, and, you know, try to take action on it. And, and my fellow board members and, and the staff for, you know, their thoughtful discussion tonight and coming up with, you know, at, at least an action, you know, an action plan. And again, is it perfect? Probably not, but I think you know, it, it's, it's, it's time for us to do something. It's time for us to take action, you know, as a nation, as a community, and, and as a school district. And so I'm, I'm very happy that we were able to move that in the right direction tonight, and it's only the start, but we, we have a lot of work to do. But again, thank everyone for, for their thoughtfulness. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Gwen?
Yeah, I will echo everyone's comments and, and my own earlier comments about our amazing alums and just how impressed I am by them. And then on the completely different topic, I will say that I did get private messages after public comment from a couple people who supported the work in the gym, but felt like our public comment was, you know, sufficiently. They didn't, they didn't want to seem like they were missing the point of what we were discussing, so they didn't really want to share. But anyhow, that's all.
Good, thank you. Karen?
No, I'm all set. I think we've, everybody has been fully thanked, and I appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness. Thank you.
Mary Lee?
Oh, the same as Karen. Thank you.
Okay, Maureen?
I will echo Karen and Mary Lee.
All right, and then I'll say the same thank you again for the, the students and alumni for their comments and participation this evening. We will move as quickly as we can and implement what we can as quickly as, as possible. And appreciate all your feedback, and, and we'll go through the documents that you provided in more detail. So thank you for that. And then also, I just wanted to quickly give a shout out to the Barlow PTSA for all their help on graduation. Because I, I know they did a lot and were there all day as well. So I just want to make sure that we did recognize them for all their efforts and contributions. They also made that a great ceremony, making it happen for us. Thank you as well. All right. With that, then we move to adjournment. May I have a motion from a board member to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do you want to hold out for ten more minutes? All right, I've got a motion from.
Seconded.
Second by Maureen. All right, I'm assuming no one wants to discuss or filibuster for ten minutes, so all in favor say aye. All right, we are adjourned at eleven forty-eight. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Thank you.